Kids of all with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will call our meeting to order and welcome. Thank you so much for being here. We have quite a variety of things we're going to accomplish today. And so it is appreciated by all of us on the commission to see this support. We're going to start with a presentation on the USPCA Nationals, our LPD K-9 recognition. And they did a great job. And Assistant Chief Lehman is going to give us an update. And then we have something later for the dogs, you know.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm Assistant Chief Hans Lehman. And behalf of Chief Garcia in the Lakeland Police Department, I'm proud to welcome a few of our elite K-9 unit members this morning. Coming forward now, wanted to recognize them Sergeant Chad Whitaker and K-9 Blizzard, Officer Ryan Back and K-9 Smoke, Officer Preston Chapman and K-9 Judah, Officer John Skillman and K-9 Mako, and Sergeant Ryan McLaughlin. As with tradition, we're here to recognize these teams for their outstanding results in the recent 2022 United States Police K-9 National Field Trials. The National Patrol and Detection Dog Trials were during the week of September 18th in Lowndes County, Georgia, where 78 K-9 teams from across the United States competed. The teams competed and tested for certification and obedience, suspect search, article and evidence search, and criminal apprehension. We're proud to announce that all of our teams certified and rated among the top performers while doing so. As such, here's some of the highlights from the competition we wanted to present to you. First place, national champion, four-person Department Patrol K-9 team is Lakeland's very own group that is up here. Sergeant Chad Whitaker, K-9 Blizzard, Officer Back and K-9 Smoke, Officer Chapman, K-9 Judah, Officer Skillman, K-9 Mako, and Sergeant McLaughlin and newly retired K-9 Lars. Sergeant Whitaker and K-9 Blizzard also finished first place overall out of 78 teams and won the National Top Patrol Dog Award. Officer Back and K-9 Smoke finished seventh place overall, and Officer Skillman and K-9 Mako finished 11th place overall. In the obedience category, Sergeant Whitaker and K-9 It's the fourth time since 2010 that an LPD team has won the national four-person title. Also marks the second time Sergeant Whitaker and his K-9 partner have taken home the top individual patrol dog prize, where he previously won it in 2015 with retired K-9 Knox. Our K-9 units nationally recognized and has held many titles, both regionally and nationally. So needless to say, we're very proud of these officers. And a big part of their success is their foundation and standards set by previous handlers and their extensive training. So in closing, I would ask you to join me in giving these officers a round of applause for their outstanding performance and representing the city of Lakeland well.
All right, now we can do a picture in some fashion. How many of us could be out there? Okay, who wants to behind you, right? Normally, we'd have the other next presentation coming up, but in this case, we let everybody leave the room first. All right, so next is Tom Phillips and team from Citrus Connection with an update on what's happening in transportation.
Right here, right here. Let me just get you up, okay?
We can see you better there. And then everybody can see you. That's great. Welcome, sir.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having me today. I'm absolutely positive that everybody's here for transit. So thank you for coming. I looked at the agenda and it wasn't the dogs and it's not the other things coming up. I'm sure it's mass transit. So thank you very much for having me today. For the record, I'm Tom Phillips, the Executive Director of the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District, which does business as the Citrus Connection. We are a 42-year-old organization that was created by the taxpayers of the greater Lakeland area as a municipal service taxing unit to provide transportation to the greater Lakeland area. And since 2015, we are now the countywide provider of transportation, providing transit to all 686,000 residents of Polk County. But since I'm in front of the commission today, we'll be speaking specifically about the city of Lakeland and the greater Lakeland area. And so we are here today to give you your annual update. The Board of Directors is three Lakeland City Commissioners by legislation and two county commissioners, Commissioner Philip Walker. Our board chair is Sarah Roberts-Mcarley and Mayor Muttz. And from the county, it is George Lindsay and Martha Santiago. So what has happened in the years since we have been with you? We try to limit route changes, as you know, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and the public. We try to limit the route changes to one time of year. But the social and economic indicators of Lakeland can change time to time. So our crack planning department who's here today will make changes. For example, if Steve Scruggs in the LEDC call or Jason Willey calls and says that there's a particular project or business that's opening that needs mass transportation, if the school board's making a change, we'll make those changes. But we try to limit them to once a year in October. So Lakeland has seen extreme growth in the last three or four years, and that is not going to let up. And so our most recent route changes really focused on moving towards a urban-style transportation system. And so based on the success of the Peach Line, which is our road diet buses, and the Squeeze, which we'll talk about, we introduced our first two downtown community circulators. The first is the East Side Circulator that services the Lakeland Public Library, Town Center, Polk Museum of Art, and Lakeland High School. What this allows us to do is free up the rest of the transit lines so that they're able to get out of the downtown core quicker because we have the East Side Circulator and its sister on the West Side, which provides Kathleen High School, Lakeland Housing Authority, Wabash Shopping Center, and the RP Funding Center. So if you think of these as two tight urban routes that operate in the greater downtown Lakeland area, it then frees up the entire network to run express through that area to get people to the outer peripherals of Lakeland in a much more efficient manner and do it at a lower cost. Our new routes are the Coral Line, which services Lakeside Village, Polk State Airside, and Walmart Imperial. And then very excited about the soft, soft opening of Bonnet Springs this weekend. And that will be serviced with our Lemon Line. And we can talk more about some possible future plans as well for that. But the Lemon Line currently serves Bonnet Springs and other stops on George Jenkins Boulevard, as well as County Line Road. Over the last two years, we were impacted by COVID very specifically in driver shortages. People were not feeling comfortable driving the buses. We took the two-week national shutdown where we ran very little transit. But other than that, our drivers were behind the wheel the entire COVID pandemic, providing access to those who are transportation-dependent. 87% of the people in Lakeland who use the bus system are transportation-dependent, meaning they do not have access to a personal-use vehicle, which is why during the COVID pandemic, we only saw a 60% decline in our ridership, where nationally it was 80 to 90% because the citizens of Lakeland didn't have the choice to return to their cars, like in New York, Chicago, or in LA. They needed the bus service to be able to get to work, to be able to get to their medical appointments. So we saw drivers that were no longer willing to do that service. And then at the same time, we had the pressures, and I know that the city manager has talked about it, and the pressures of the Florida 15 and the minimum wage increases. And so our once-competitive wages for the Citrus Connection, which were approximately $15 an hour after training with 100% paid benefits, were no longer competitive compared to Amazon and other warehousing jobs where they could earn a dollar or two more an hour. And so what this allowed us to do was renegotiate with the union. And effective this October, our driver pay is now banded within three particular bands. So zero to three years, $18 an hour; four to nine years, $21 an hour; and 10-plus years, $24 an hour. This has made us competitive in the market again. And while it is difficult to say, out of 200 employees, we were down approximately 30 to 35 drivers at the height of the pandemic. We are now into single digits because we are a competitive workplace again. So we're very excited about those changes that are here. Hurricane Ian was completely different than Hurricane Irma. I have only been through two hurricanes, knock on wood, in the 11 years that I have been here. So we did not see the response that we saw for Hurricane Ian that we saw for Irma. We did transport 107 individuals. As a reminder, what the Citrus Connection does is we respond to any crisis that you have in the city of Lakeland or the greater Polk County area, including hurricanes. So when you had the Lake Morton High Rise Fire, for example, a few years ago, the Citrus Connection immediately suspended service. We sent 100% of our vehicles to the Lake Morton fire location. We took those seniors in a partnership with the city to the RP Funding Center, where they stayed safe while the fire was being put out. We then transported those individuals to the Winter Haven site, where they were able to live, and then we brought them back. So we provide that type of intermittent disaster recovery to the citizens of Lakeland. But then we also provide transportation to the special needs shelters. And that is through the Polk County Board of County Commissioners. Anyone who is here today or anyone who is watching can register through the county. And if you deem that you need electricity during the hurricane because you have medicines or you need air conditioning or breathing equipment or skilled nursing care, you can register with the Polk County Board of County Commissioners. It's free. And the Citrus Connection will pick you up at your home if you're transit-dependent. And anyone else who's in your home will take you to one of three or four special needs shelters that are across the county. The Lakeland site is the Big McKeel. And then we do house checks. So once the hurricane is over, we go out and we check on Lakeland residents who we transported. We check on their homes, partner with Lakeland Electric and make sure that their electricity is back up. We make sure that the home is habitable. And then we take that client home. So that is a service that we provide as well. The road diet, I apologize, I don't have a particular slide for the road diet. But I know that the road diet is very controversial. But the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District continues to be Switzerland. They've taken no position, good, bad, or otherwise, on the road diet other than the fact that we want to do what is in the best interest of the community and whatever the community decides, we will support. Since the road diet has started, we implemented the Peach Line. We deleted 14 bus stops in the Dixieland Project area, which has allowed our buses to run express through the road diet area. You no longer have to sit behind our buses. They just go express. But what do you do for the residents who lost their bus stops, especially those that are in the senior high-rise community in the Dixieland neighborhood? We created the Peach Line thanks to funding from local municipal, I'm sorry, from our local tax base as well as the state. And we now provide a circulator that operates in that area. And we're doing thousands of rides a month on that. So it's extremely popular and the road diet residents benefit from not having to sit behind our buses. I'm happy to announce that the Florida Department of Transportation, thanks to some work with our board chair, has, DOT has agreed to fund that for at least the next three to five years while the commission and the community decide what the permanence of the road diet is going to look like. So the buses will not be returning to Florida Avenue until the city commission, the Florida Department of Transportation, or other entity makes a final decision on what that's going to look like. And then ending with the most exciting, the implementation of the Squeeze. I usually ask people when I'm presenting, how many of you rode the bus today? And nobody raises their hand. And I feel like George Bush on an aircraft carrier. But how many of you have ridden the Squeeze? See, now there's hands for the first time. This is progress. Very exciting. And so the Squeeze is an eight-person traditional golf cart. And it operates on Friday and Saturday nights. And thanks to a partnership with the LDDA, I see Julie here somewhere, we now service 17 special events that we partner with the LDDA on, as well as all the farmers markets. It starts at Florida Southern College. It starts at Florida Southern College, runs down the Lake Morton Historic Neighborhood, zigzags through downtown and drops people off at our eateries, restaurants, to entertainment venues, then crosses and hits the two RP Funding Center hotels, where we're able to partner with the RP Funding Center to get tourists to access the downtown eateries rather than going to chain restaurants. I just learned from Carly Flagler in our planning department, we did 600 rides on the Squeeze this weekend. Our goal was to do 100. We're very excited, very excited about the Squeeze. We started off with a fairing system on the Squeeze. And it was an app-based system. But we got feedback from the business community and the downtown community that the app was fiddly and it was just something that was there. So the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District Board made the Squeeze free. And we're very excited about that. So the Squeeze is funded for the next three years. These are traditional golf carts. It's been an excellent partnership. And we're very, very excited about what it means for the downtown community. We're getting great feedback. I'd like to thank the managers and the employees at the RP Funding Center hotels. If you're driving past the RP Funding Center hotels on Friday and Saturday nights between 4:00 and 8:00 o'clock, there are actually queues every single hour for people waiting on the Squeeze golf carts to go to downtown Lakeland. These are people who are staying at the hotels for events at the RP Funding Center, who are then choosing to ride the carts to our downtown locally-owned eateries rather than getting in a car and heading to a chain. So we're very excited about what that means for economic development. The best is yet to come. We're very excited to see what the future holds. And for those of you that haven't ridden the Squeeze or public transit, please do so. And I'll stand for any, I'm sorry, we've had 5,309 rides since the service launched in November, but you can go ahead and add another 600 to that, thanks to the car show this weekend, farmer's market, just exciting times. This is really, really exciting. It's neat to see hands in the audience raised. I had the opportunity to speak to a couple of the county commission candidates for Commissioner Walker's seat. And all of them feel that public transportation is important to the future of Lakeland and understand, I think, what we're trying to do with the traditional transit service and what we're doing with the Squeeze. I'd also just like to note that over 99% of our budget still goes to the primary focus of providing those 87% of residents access to public transportation. So while the Squeeze is our highest profile and it is servicing a different segment of the community, which we're excited about, we should be providing services for all the citizens of Lakeland. 99% of our budget is still going to our core competency, which is giving people a leg up so they can get to their jobs, their shopping, and their medical appointments. And I'll stand for any questions.
Questions from Commissioners or comments. Commissioner McCleod.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tom. Great update. You mentioned that ridership levels are returning to what we saw pre-pandemic. What does that look like? On any given day, how many riders do we have?
About 7,500 riders a day is what we should expect. Right now, we're probably in the ballpark of right around 5,000. And that's just on our fixed route service. That is not our paratransit service. Commissioner McCleod, we provide three basic types of service. I'm glad you asked this, sir. Three basic types of service at the Citrus Connection. We provide the fixed route service to the citizens of Lakeland, the big buses, where you go out to the bus stop and it goes from point A to point B and you wait at the pole in the ground. Then anyone in Lakeland who lives within 3/4 of a mile of where our buses run, so imagine a bubble to the north, south, east, and west of where all those big buses run. We provide ADA service. That is door-to-door transportation for the elderly, disabled, or anyone that a doctor medically says cannot wait at a bus. It's a certification process. And then we provide door-to-door transportation for $2 each way. The third type of service that we provide is open to all residents in Polk County who are at or below the poverty line. And there is a minimally financial, minimal financial assessment that we do required by the state to make sure that they're at or below the poverty line. And then we'll provide transit to anyone in Polk County for medical or medical-related purposes. And that service will leave the county if we need to get someone to the VA or we need to get someone, especially pediatric children, who need to get to specialized pediatric treatments we may not have in Polk County. That's the only service that leaves the county directly.
Commissioner Music.
Yeah. So on the ADA service that you provide, two things on that. One, just, I mean, kudos for going beyond transportation, right? And really taking care of people where they are. Is there special funding that we receive from state or national level because of that particular service that we offer?
Yes, Commissioner Music. You receive funding through the federal, I'm sorry, the Federal Transit Administration for the ADA. The ADA service is required under federal law. Wherever we run the buses, we have to run the 3/4 of a mile bubble that is there. The transportation disadvantaged is 90% funded by the state, 10% funded by the county. It is, Florida is the only state in the Union that has such a service. And that is available in all 67 counties. So yes, we have the ADA and then we have the transportation disadvantaged. One's paid for by the feds, leveraging state and local dollars. The other is paid for by the state, leveraged by county dollars.
And is that, is that funding enough? Is that offsetting? But is it, is it covering our expenses on those two rounds?
Yes, sir, yes. We, we are required by Florida state statute, just as the Lakeland City Commission is, to provide a balanced budget every year. And I'm happy to say, specifically within our partnership with the county since 2015, we have come in within no less than 3% of budget, either positive or negative, since we've worked with the county. And those were a lot of unknown expenses. So we're doing the best we can with the resources we have, Commissioner Music. I will take the opportunity to say, though, since I have the dais for a moment, is that according to the 2010 census, and I know the 2020 data is coming out, but in the Brookings Institute book, Confronting Suburban Poverty, Alan Barubi, and the data showed that the Polk-Lakeland-Winterhaven urbanized area is the seventh poorest suburban area in the United States. 17.7% of our population is at or below the poverty line. That's the data. However, we'll see what the 2020 census data shows. But when Kyle Kennedy from the Ledger called Alan Barubi, the Executive Director of the Brookings Institute, and asked, "Why is the Lakeland-Winterhaven urbanized area the seventh poorest suburban area in the United States?" He said, "The number one reason is you need more mass transportation." Because it makes it that much harder to get that first job to get to economic self-sufficiency. I called Kyle Kennedy after that newspaper article read, was written. And I said, "Did you throw us a softball? Did you do that for the Citrus Connection?" And he said, "Tom, I swear to God." I just asked him what the number one reason was, and he said it was a lack of mass transit. Where will we be in the 2020 census, Commissioner Music? I'm not sure. But I'd imagine that we're still going to be in that general area. And so transit is going to be an important component of that. And again, I'm saying that for the Lakeland-Winterhaven urbanized area. I realize some of the metrics, especially for the core of downtown Lakeland, are different.
All right, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Mitch Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Phillips, for being here today, giving us the update. And you know, prior to the pandemic, pre-pandemic, we were working on making sure the, I call the Park and Ride Transit Facility, Galfield's Park and Ride Transit Facility, have accommodations for bathrooms and restrooms. And I continue to get questions about that, you know. And I know we've been trying our best to make sure it happens. But you know, of course, it's dollars that we need and the state providing the dollars to support it. Now, we, I guess, I call post-pandemic, what do you see? Because I know those that may be listening to Annual Report, with that facility that we have and the use of it and the connectivity that it provides from different other transit authorities, will we ever get to that point? How soon will we get to that point?
Commissioner Walker, I am sure that we are going to hit the ridership numbers that are needed. The preventative now is that we need a certain number of rides going through the Galfield's Park and Ride Lot at I-4 and 98. We named it after Galfield's because he served as a Lakeland City, I'm sorry, he served as a Lam-Ted Commissioner, a Citrus Connection Commissioner for 16 years. He was also the first elected African-American mayor of the city of Lakeland. So we felt that that was important to name after him. We need to see a certain number of ridership numbers. The Citrus Connection numbers are extremely strong going through there, but they're not what FDOT wants to see. When we had Flix Bus going between Tampa and Orlando coming to Lakeland, and Flix just recently started back up, and we had Megabus, those numbers were getting closer. So as soon as we get to those numbers, we'll apply. And it is almost an automatic trigger with FDOT. Everything has been snubbed in with electrical and plumbing. So once we get the grant funding, it will be cheaper. We don't have to break up a bunch of pavement to put in the stuff under the ground because we had planned on it.
I think it's important that you did share because I think a lot of folks, we don't understand the use of a particular facility that we have. And especially with Flix Bus coming back and forth from Tampa to Lakeland and Megabus. Because I know I've had several students that, from the Lakeland community, who have used Megabus quite a bit. And even my own daughter, not being a student but an adult, you know, coming from Atlanta, you know, to visit, she'd come home, she would use Megabus to come and be dropped right there, so.
And our offer to Greyhound still stands that anytime they feel like they'd like to get out of downtown Lakeland and move to the Galfield's Park and Ride Lot, we'd be happy to have them.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McCleod.
So thank you, Tom. And just for the audience, I'm so glad you're here today to hear about this because a lot of people think that public transit is really not necessarily a priority. Or if you don't need it, then you don't need it, right? So you're not really probably attuned to what goes on and paying attention to what goes on. And the Squeeze is helping us, as the board chair of transit right now, the Squeeze is helping us sort of break some paradigms down of what public transit can look like and how it can be multimodal and how we can serve different segments of the community at large. So I just want to say, after being on the commission and elected in 2018, the end of 2018, or 2019, beginning of 2019, and sitting on the transit board, this is one of the most efficient forms of government. And you're not going to hear me say that a lot, ever. But this really is, for the city of Lakeland and for Polk County at large, it's, they're a lean and mean machine and they take really good care of all of the things that they have to do around the county, but especially in the Lam-Ted Lakeland Area Mass Transit area. One of the things I just wanted to highlight with regard to the Squeeze is, when Tom talks about 600, Carly talked about 600 rides this weekend, that's just Friday and Saturday nights, 600 rides. And going to those, the two hotels at RP Funding Center, those visitors, their cars are staying parked. So when you're fussing at us about the road diet and we're fussing at DOT about the road diet, understand that transit has a piece to play, a part to play in this that is huge. They should have the starring role in transit. Because those visitors are staying parked. It is not that far to walk from those places at RP to downtown. But the Squeeze helps elevate that mindset. So you get on a little golf cart and you ride from RP to Black and Brew or to Harry's or to the Terrace or wherever downtown you want to go or like near or the joinery or even Florida Southern. And you're like, man, this is not that far. I just rode on a golf cart and didn't fear for my life. And so it's very exciting to have that aspect, not only for our visitors, but for our locals who live in South Lake Morton, to hop on that, leave their car at home, and then run down to the joinery for a Friday evening or maybe the Polk Theater. And so that is one way that our staff at Citrus Connection is really nimble and forward-thinking and thinking, how can we have people hop on transit? And it's not necessarily just hopping on a bus to go to work, but it's another aspect of it. And volume drives quality. So the more people that utilize the services that we provide, the more funding we can get, the more rates at which we can have quicker stops so you're not waiting 45 minutes on a long line. And it's the nature of being in a rural community that's now becoming more urbanized. So kudos to the staff. I could talk about transit all day long. I get really excited about it because everybody here, I was doing a presentation last week and you raised your hand. You said, "Okay, how many people have traveled outside Florida?" So a bunch of people have. How many have ridden public transit in somewhere else? And everyone raises their hand. How many people have ridden public transit in Polk County? And it's crickets. So as we grow, this is an imperative part of how we grow well and how we grow smart, is that we utilize this service as much as we can to leave our cars parked. We're not taking away anyone's independence. We're just enhancing it. And the last thing I will say with those two circulators is you have to look at this in a concentric model. So those circulators work really well So those circulators work really well, because people that live at Lake Morton High Rise and Retirement Community, or in Dixieland, who may not have two cars at their house, and they only have one, and it went to work with the person going to work, they can hop on the circulator and go to South Gate, and go to Walgreens, to the pharmacy, and they can do everything they need to do, and then connect and go to their doctor's appointments. So it's just a mind shift, but so I'm sorry that you all had to hear my diatribe, but there's so many of you today that I just took this opportunity to talk a lot about it. But I just want to commend Tom Phillips and his entire staff, his, the guys that run the buses and the shop and the administrative work and the public relations work and the community work of getting out there. And just last thing I'll say is FYI, any student in Polk County can ride the bus for free with their student ID. So if we can get the next generation to utilize this service, that's less cars on the road, that gives them more independence at an earlier age, and it's safe. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. And Commissioner McCarthy is exactly right. I just am thrilled that you took the time to do that and outline it, because it's necessary. Tom Phillips, as an Executive Director, is an incredible mass transit Executive Director, could work in much larger cities and other places in the country. They love living in Lakeland. We love having you here. And we love the way that you lead your team, which is also incredible. So the fact is that your leadership perks down through to create a very flexible, very nimble, and very efficient and cost-effective team, for which we're all the beneficiaries. So thank you so much, and we appreciate your annual report.
Thank you all very much.
Well, that was fun. Now comes some more, sort of more fun. The first thing I'm going to do is read a proclamation, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Walker to come out front with me for this, if you could. As you all know, and many of you are here because of this, we're in the point of making a transition. And that transition, we're certainly recognized as Commissioner Walker and his service. And so we want to do a proclamation to read to him for that, but as an absolutely close personal friend and a man who I admire, it is also a little bit of bittersweet in that as well. So it says, whereas Commissioner Philip Walker began his service as a city commissioner on January 1st, 2010, and has faithfully served consecutive terms with an appearance that doesn't look a day, now that he doesn't look a day older than when he first joined the city commission, while continually continuing to dress impeccably well, as evidenced right here. Whereas Commissioner Walker came from the ranks of the Lakeland Police Department in his early years of public service, and never wavered in his support for public safety as well as the safety of our citizens. And whereas Commissioner Walker has served our community as a statesman, leading through turbulent and peaceful times, considering all parts of our community, and being inclusive of various thoughts, backgrounds, beliefs, and individuals. Philip has a place that he calls his heart, which marvelously reflects his love for others throughout Lakeland and in the area of what he calls downtown west, built into what I call, I like that seat. And has created links within our community through passionate pursuits, which reflects a lifetime of biblical service and empathy for others. And whereas Commissioner Walker often walks around his district and is highly observant and a student of infrastructure, occasionally he notices water leaking from a meter or a streetlight burnout and takes pictures or videos, sending them to the appropriate water utility or Lakeland Electric personnel. Thank you for your diligence and observational prowess in helping to repair Lakeland's infrastructure and conserve our precious resources. And whereas Commissioner Walker's commitment to Lakeland and the Ridge League of Cities has built positive relationships with all 17 municipalities, and his understanding that respect for one another will continually strengthen our common goals. And whereas Commissioner Walker has a great representative, is a great representative of Lakeland through the Florida League of Cities, he made Lakeland proud of his tireless efforts to protect home rural as an advocate of the fact that local government is optimally governed locally. Commissioner Walker served as President of the Florida League of Cities from 2021 through 2022, and during his presidency, he focused on the importance of grassroots advocacy, increased engagement by elected officials statewide, and provided the tools and the resources that municipalities need to be successful. And whereas Commissioner Walker holds the record for the most restated facts for clarification purposes. He usually, he usually has words of immense importance and recollections on many topics from his past 13 years of commission experience. There again, he has never met a microphone he did not want to hold. Whereas Commissioner Walker, admired for his kind heart, warm personality, and sunny disposition, often found himself forced to endure frigid room temperatures for endless hours while engaged in strategic planning sessions at the RP Funding Center. He would often commiserate with city staff about how cold it was, causing him to wear jackets, hats, and maybe an occasional scarf during some of the hottest months of the year. And whereas Commissioner Walker will need a supply of ink pens and Ricola cough drops when he leaves the dais. He also never heard a beat of music that he didn't make him dance, and also had a welcome smile and kind hello for city staff. And whereas Commissioner Walker intentionally embodies a caring heart for our community, his church, his wife, and children, and his family, his governing thoughtfulness for citizens will be deeply. Now therefore, I, William Mudd, Mayor of the City of Lakeland, on behalf of a grateful community, do hereby ask all present to recognize Philip Walker publicly and join this acclaim, acknowledging the phenomenal career and honorable service from this great servant leader, and urge all citizens to join the commission in lifting said recognition by commemorating this observance as he concludes his distinguished public career. We all wish him happiness and prosperity in future endeavors in which, in witness where I have hereby set my hand and seal with the City of Lakeland to be affixed the 17th day of October 2022. Congrats.
I think we have a, one of our, Commissioner Tyler from the PTO wanted to make say a word about Philip VMA.
About what?
Philip.
About Philip, okay. Who's this? What's it going on?
Out here from our TPO board.
Roy.
Where's Roy? I can't see him.
He's coming.
There you are. Hi, Roy.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
You want to say something about?
Yeah, yeah, but I was keeping it really, really short.
All right.
I met this gentleman back in, well, long, long, long time. We became acquaintances. We survived police academy together, and some public service for quite some time. We became associates. Through this process, we have become friends. Much more important, because you get to pick those. And it has been my immense honor and pleasure to have been associated with. And one of those times when a name comes up, you don't kind of head for the back door and act like you don't know anything. Now, I did notice something, Phil. The canine was a little fidgety standing between you and the mayor many ago, but that may be a whole different reason.
Hopefully so.
And I still can't understand how you came after me, you leaving before me. Something's not right about that. And whatever this transportation thing is of which you guys speak, good luck with that. Someday I'll try to dip my toe in those waters. But again, brother, love you. The city's been blessed to have you. I too have been blessed to have you as a friend, and I hope you consider me to be one.
I do.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Tyler is the chairman of our transportation planning organization at the county level, and that's where we get to work with him. That brings me to our next proclamation. We're going to ask the Kiwanis Club here to receive this. Matt Cantwell, former governor of the Florida District of Kiwanis, Adam Hartley, president of the 2021-22 Club, and Paul Cole, president for 2022-23 year Kiwanis Club, will all come forward, and anybody else that you may want to have that's in the room, you know, that's Kiwanis based. This is a wonderful day, because we have Kiwanians and Rotarians right next to each other and being civil. And so I put you first, okay? Okay, all good so far? All right. Whereas Kiwanis International is one of the largest organizations in the world with more than 551,000 members of all ages and abilities in more than 80 nations. And whereas the members of Kiwanis Club of Lakeland are devoted to improving the world one child and one community at a time by seeking primacy to the human and spiritual rather than the material values of life. And whereas in addition to improving the lives of children in Lakeland and in communities around the world, Kiwanis Club members promote the development of community leaders, positive role models, intercultural understanding and cooperation, and opportunities for fellowship, personal growth, professional development, and community service. And whereas the first Kiwanis Club started its service in Detroit, Michigan, USA in 1915, and the Kiwanis Club of Lakeland was formed on March 14th, 1922, just seven years later. And we'd be celebrating its 100th year on October 25th, 2022, at Bonnet Springs Park. And whereas the service provided by the Kiwanis Club of Lakeland will continue to have a positive impact on our community and citizens. Now therefore, I, William Mudd, City of Lakeland Mayor, and on behalf of the entire Lakeland Commission, do hereby proclaim October 25th, 2022, as Kiwanis Club of Lakeland's centennial anniversary, and in the city of Lakeland, and hereby call upon all citizens of Lakeland therefore to make themselves aware of the Kiwanis Club of Lakeland, whose members this day and every day are providing meaningful service to our citizens, schools, and community. In witness where I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Lakeland to be affixed the 17th day of October 2022. And I was in your little treehouse that's air-conditioned yesterday at Bonnet Springs. There you go. And then it comes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Like Philip, I enjoy a good mic. So, but I'll just take a minute. Who would have thought that in 1922, that the Kiwanis Club of Lakeland would still be standing and relevant today in the ever-changing world in which we live? And who would have thought that we, the Kiwanis Club of Lakeland, would have grown to be one of the largest clubs in the state of Florida? And that has been accomplished by two things. One is great community leaders who have stepped up and heard the call for help for children and the elderly and the sick here in Lakeland, but just as important as the citizens of Lakeland have joined us in all our initiatives, whether supporting programs like VISTI, or Salvation Army, or Bethany Center, or Boys and Girls Club, or our own initiatives like Stuff the Bus, or Save a Life program, or even the treehouse that Bill mentioned, that was a $350,000 treehouse finished out at Bonnet Springs Park. So all this has been made possible by the generosity of a lot of people here in the city of Lakeland, and we are grateful for that. So here's the appeal. If you haven't had the opportunity to be engaged in the life of somebody less fortunate than yourself, then your day is never complete. And I would encourage you, if you're not involved with an organization like Kiwanis or Rotary, that you do so. I'll give you a plug. But Kiwanis, being engaged in Kiwanis will afford you the one thing that you can never touch, but hold close to your heart, and that's the memories you create in service to others. And Kiwanis has been doing that for over 100 years, right here in Lakeland. And we thank you for your club support.
Can we get a Kiwanis group shot? Yes, as well. For all of you. Yes.
Y'all are going to have to get tight.
All right, so we're going to get a nice and tight.
One, two, three. Everybody try to leave with your eyes open.
All right, one second. There you go.
Okay, now, they were going to stay and watch the Rotary presentation, but they were called to another meeting somewhere else. So now it's our opportunity to bring the Rotarians up. And come on up, because we have a wonderful opportunity to celebrate an unbelievable accomplishment within our world, World Polio Day. Come on up, Rotarians, let's come up. Irma Cole, member of the Rotary International Club, and Mark Skolnick, former District Governor of District 6890, a member of the Rotary Club, will be here as well. That is, Irma, this is Mark. Honestly, I didn't dress appropriately.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Whereas Rotary is a global network of neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe. And whereas the Rotary motto, service above self, inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary, in 1985, launched Polio Plus, and in 1988, helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and GAVI, the Vaccine Alliance, to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of totally eradicating the disease. And whereas to date, Rotary has contributed more than $2.4 billion and countless voluntary hours to protect nearly 3 billion children in 122 countries. Think of those numbers. Whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which will be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. Whereas in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $10 billion to the effort, $10 billion. And whereas there are over 1.4 million Rotary members and 46,000 clubs throughout the world that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in their local communities and abroad. Now therefore, I, William Mudd, City of Lakeland, Florida Mayor, and on behalf of the entire Commission, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2022, as World Polio Day. In witness where I have hereunto set my hand, fixing the official seal of the City of Lakeland on this 18th day of October 2022, which is actually tomorrow. And that makes us wonder how I signed it. And so, so congratulations. You think about, just think about what we just heard between Kiwanis and Rotary, the difference makers. These two organizations are not only locally, but internationally. Awesome work. Who would like to speak?
To bring polio home, we operate 146 laboratories throughout the world, testing water to try and keep polio away. And we find polio in the water system, because that's how it's transmitted. We go and vaccinate, or revaccinate all the children in the area. Now, polio is only a plane ride away, because we have over a million unvaccinated children in Florida. I'll say it again, over a million unvaccinated children in Florida. So if somebody from the two countries that have the most polio cases, Pakistan or Afghanistan, come and visit, or they come here to settle, or go to Disney, they could bring it and get it in the water. Because 90% of the children under five that have polio show no symptoms. And they could get it in the water and our over 1 million unvaccinated children in Florida, it'd go through here like wildfire. I want to thank you very much for making the public aware. I want to thank you very much for making the public aware, and we raise our $50 million every year, and it's matched by the Gates Foundation two to one. They match it and give it to our foundation to give grants. They're the only ones, we're the only ones they do that with. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it. So let's cuddle together for a picture. And then we have to hear you like that. Hold it. All right. Three, two, one. One more time. We eradicated film as well. Thank you, sir. All right, that brings us to our committee reports and related items. Thank you for your patience during these presentations this morning. We had a municipal boards and committee meeting on Friday, and Chairman Madden is going to give that report.
Thank you, Mayor. At the municipal boards committee meeting, we had a recommendation from Airport Director Chris Hallstrand to appoint Ashley Udick to a three-year term beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2025. That, let me see, Kelly, I'm looking at this, do I need to put the, how we voted?
I covered it at the end, so if you want to list them all.
Okay, so you went ahead and listed them all. Okay. We did take them one at a time in the meeting, so we'll just go ahead and wait till the end. I guess there was no controversy.
There wasn't.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and continue all of the recommendations and then talk about the voting at the end. So Planning and Zoning Board, recommendation from Chief Planner Matthew Lyons to reappoint Silvana Knight to an additional three-year term beginning December 2, 2022, and ending December 1, 2025. On the Nuisance Abatement Board, there was a recommendation from Mayor Bill Mutt to reappoint Terry Carter to an additional three-term beginning November 15, 2022, and ending November 14, 2025. And also on the Nuisance Abatement Board to reappoint David Still to an additional three-year term beginning November 15, 2022, and ending November 14, 2025. On the Lakeland History and Cultural Center, there are many recommendations, and Mayor Bill Mutt recommended to appoint Lynn Simkins, Lloyd Ruston, Kelly Fisher, all to a three-year term beginning October 17, 2022, and ending October 16, 2025. And then to appoint Del Pari, Yvonne McShay, and Kat Eskins to a two-year term beginning October 17, 2022, and ending October 16, 2024. We reviewed each of these recommended appointments. Mayor Bill Mutt moved to approve each appointment as it was presented, Commissioner Soffler seconded, and the motions carried unanimously. For information only, the Police Pension Board held a member election and appointed Michael Lewis to a first term beginning August 29, 2022, and ending August 29, 2026. As always, we look forward to looking at applications that come in to fill the upcoming vacancies. We currently have an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee looking for one member who's an employer within that jurisdiction. Civil Service Board is also looking for a member. And then the Community Redevelopment Area Advisory Board, which I highly recommend to anyone who does business in those CRA districts, we're looking for three members, two who own property or a business in the Dixieland CRA district, and one in the Midtown CRA district. So Commissioner McCleod serves on that as well, and it is just a great way to learn more about how we are investing in our community in those CRA districts. Again, I highly recommend any citizen who wants to get more involved in city commission, run for office, or just learn more about their community and give their skills, please put your applications in for the municipal boards and committees on our website. And that was it.
Is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second.
A second, so discussion by commissioners? Any discussion or questions by the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes. Now that brings us to the consent agenda, which involves only the minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second.
Discussion by commissioners, or any questions? Anybody in the audience? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes. We have no pre-arranged requests appear from the general public. Of course, we always listen to comments at the end of the commission meeting on an available basis to every citizen, limited to five minutes. And then we have public hearings, 3A1, which is an ordinance, second reading, and our city attorney Davis will take that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have several ordinances for consideration of adoption this morning. The first is proposed ordinance number 22-046, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, admitting ordinance 3440 as amended to provide for a modification to planning unit development PUD zoning to increase the maximum number of multifamily dwelling units allowed from 152 to 288, increase the maximum allowable building height from two stories to three stories, and adopt a site plan for a new multifamily development project on approximately 26.8 acres located south of the Polk Parkway, east of Harden Boulevard, and west of Old Highway 37, providing conditions, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Approve.
Second.
Motion approved in a second from Commissioner Music. Discussion by commissioners. We're gonna have a presentation here first.
I'll wait till after.
And so maybe we should do that first. All right, go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. Good morning. For the record, Chuck Barnby was the City of Community and Economic Development Department. As Mr. Davis noted, the site is located along the south side of South Parkway-Frenage Road, between Lockheed Martin within the Oakbridge Development Regional Impact and the adjacent neighborhood, the Villas Development to the east. And so, got a picture here of the site as well as the notification area. The zoning request is to, as Mr. Davis noted in the title, change the PUD, planning unit development zoning ordinance, to allow for 288 multifamily dwelling units instead of the existing 152 that are allowed. It also increases the building heights from two to three stories, and also adopts a new site plan. And that site plan is included on the screen here. It was important to note, and I'll step back here, that during the public hearing process, there were a number of concerns were raised regarding traffic and compatibility slash buffering. So the revised site plan here, really, we believe the staff addresses those comments that were received during the public hearing process along the east side of the development The building setbacks have been increased to approximately 119 to 197 feet from the eastern property boundary. A 20-foot wide buffer with a six-foot-high fence with mature canopy tree plantings is also required. The amenities center in the more active parts of the development are located along the west side of the development site closer to Lockheed Martin. And because of the limited amount of frontage along South Parkway-Frenage Road, which is owned and operated by Florida DOT, the developer has worked with Lockheed Martin on a cross connection that would allow the existing eastern Lockheed Martin driveway to be removed, and a eastbound right turn lane, approximately 240 feet in length, to be installed at a joint-use Again, this is a close-up version of that joint access is how it would be configured, or at least expected to be configured. This is a cross-section of the buffer along the eastern property boundary, again, to minimize impacts with the neighborhood to the east. We have some preliminary renderings of the building as it would be designed and constructed within the development. In terms of the transportation analysis, analysis performed by Kimmel Horn and Associates that estimates the daily project trips to be a little over 1,900 daily trips, 112 during the AM peak and 144 during the PM peak. The traffic analysis was revised to include the remaining vested trips from the Oakbridge Development Regional Impact. Really, we believe it presents a conservative analysis of what future traffic would look like once all of the outstanding trips are on the road with Oakbridge to the west. Again, because of the insufficient frontage along South Parkway-Frenage Road, a formal cross-access easement agreement will be required with Lockheed Martin that will have to be recorded with the Polk County Court of Courts. And so that is one of the conditions that we have in the conditions of approval. One of the issues that came up during the analysis is the fact that the eastbound approach as it's at South Parkway-Frenage and Harden Boulevard, as it's currently configured, will fail with the addition of project traffic. A lot of that was due to the fact that when the signal and the intersection was modified about a year and a half ago, it wasn't completed according to plans, and so right now, today, we only have one eastbound lane through that intersection. That eastbound lane is the one that's deficient and is the deficient movement that causes the entire intersection to fail. The city staff and DOT have been working together to correct that. The city's Traffic Operations Division, at this point, has committed to changing out the signal heads and doing all the necessary striping to get two through lanes at that intersection, and that second lane would be a shared through left. So it would be better than what was there previously, but certainly better than what's there now as well. So that is something that's being worked on and will be done in the near term. The westbound approach at Harden Boulevard and North Parkway-Frenage Road, the westbound approach fails, but the overall intersection does meet the city's level of service standards with the project traffic and with the traffic from Oakbridge. One of our conditions of approval is that the applicant work with DOT to present a re-timing plan that is ultimately approved prior to the development moving forward. So there are some operational improvements that we believe can be made to make the intersection operate better than what it certainly will with the addition of project traffic. One of the other issues that came up during the public hearing process was safety and concern about the operations of the curve east of Underpass Road at South Parkway-Frenage and Old 37. Our Traffic Operations Division has analyzed the crashes that have occurred at that location and really found that there's nothing that would be tied to development traffic. The crash issues that exist today were rare collisions, a medical episode, and alcohol-related crashes that are occurring during overnight hours. And to address that particular issue, the city's Traffic Operations Division will be purchasing an LED lighted sign to warn motorists eastbound of the upcoming curve. We've looked at the striping, we've looked at the street lighting, and all of the other markings and signage out there today really comply with national criteria, and so that was really the only thing that was seen as something that could be done to improve the situation at that location. The site is located on the Citrus Connections Coral Line, and so a transit shelter will be required along the site's frontage, again, to meet our city's multimodal level of service standards. So just going through the conditions of approval, strike through underline of the existing planning unit development, again, the allowed number of dwelling units is 288. The development standards will be in line with Land Development Code for Multifamily 12 Suburban Neighborhood Standards. The maximum building height would be three stories or approximately 45 feet. Again, we are adopting a binding site plan. I mentioned earlier the landscaping and buffering requirements. Outdoor lighting would be required per the Land Development Code to minimize impacts on adjacent residential properties. And then in terms of the transportation conditions, there really is, as I noted previously, we have requirements for cross-access with Lockheed Martin, transit shelter along the site's frontage, re-timing of the traffic light at North Parkway-Frenage and Harden Boulevard. And so those really, what are on the screen, they represent the additional traffic conditions tied to this project. So with that, I'll stand for any questions that the board has. The applicant may have some additional comments as well, in addition to the public as part of the hearing process.
Do you want to do those comments first?
Sure.
Good morning. For the record, Mark Wilson at Kimmel Horn and Associates, 109 South Kentucky Avenue here in Lakeland. And with me today is Nick Everly from Hillpoint LLC, who's the client on the project. And as you can tell by Chuck's presentation, and a number of times he commented, we put a lot of work in this, working with staff and also working with the neighborhood. We did have a neighborhood meeting a number of months ago. We had a meeting with DOT concerning access and found out we had a little bit of work to do to get access to the property from where we were currently proposing it with the initial access. So we've been fortunate, Lockheed Martin to our west, or adjacent to us, as you see in the site plan that Chuck has talked about, has worked with us. So we're able to take their access that currently has no turn lane, work it into our project. We're gonna close theirs down and have it all tidied up in one access way. So Lockheed Martin does have, their main access is a little bit further to the west. You don't see it on this plan here, but it's kind of a secondary access. So it's gonna work out to come through our site, give them a safer ingress egress, and also make it work out for us. Otherwise, Chuck has covered it pretty detail. I'm not gonna go over everything that he's already covered for you. It's an increase in unit count, it's a current PD that allowed, PUD that allowed multifamily. We're going from two stories to three story. A lot of work on our eastern boundary Chuck had talked about to make sure we have an adequate buffer to push our buildings as far as we can, to put parking, stormwater ponds along our eastern boundary to help out there. We're also fortunate that we're adjacent to parking lot from the Villas on our east-northeast corner there in their clubhouse facility. So one of our units in parking is really just parking adjacent to parking. And then we tried to use the stormwater pond on the southeast corner there to kind of help buffer that as well. Maybe also keep in mind to our west, southwest over there, is South Village, which is proposed for multifamily mixed uses, if you will. So we're kind of sandwiched right in between South Village, a DRI that has intense uses, Lockheed Martin on our west, and then we transition to the east over to the Villas. And I'll stand for any questions if you have.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. I know it's a big jump from 156 to 288, and it's 136 more. What was the rationale, just economics, is the site compatible for, is, why such a big increase?
Well, it was from 152 to 288, like you said, but we're in a zoning district that allows up to 12 units per acre, and we're coming in around 10 and a half, 10.8, to get really detailed about it. So we're below the 12 that's allowed. But really, with the market that we're in to develop, to put the money into a site and to build units like we're building, you've got to get a little bit higher density if you stay at the 152, which really isn't feasible. It's not going to work, it's gonna stay vacant like it has been for, you know, decades, and we need to continue to be vacant in a much lower density like that. We're sandwiched right in between, like I talked about, Commissioner Reed, between a higher intensity to our west and a little bit lower intensity to our east, so we think the number kind of works out pretty well.
Was there much response from the city, from residents around the neighborhood at the zoning meeting?
I wouldn't say we had a large turnout for our neighborhood meeting, but I believe staff was there. I believe a number of changes we made were resulting from that neighborhood meeting. The plan we had presented before, we were a little bit closer to our eastern boundary over there, didn't have quite as much of a buffer. So we did a little bit of work with staff, so, you know, back and forth. This was not the very next plan we submitted. There was some back and forth to get to the plan that you see here today to allow some buffering in between the Villas. And keep in mind that, you know, the Villas has multifamily, there are connected attached units within there. It's a mixed development, you have some detached single family, but you also have attached product there with parking in front. And again, we're on the side adjacent to their clubhouse, which has parking and activity as well.
The only other question there, again, it's habitual that I, it seems like I'm the only one that brings it up when we get there, is invariably I talk about adequate parking for apartment complexes. And when I have friends that go to apartments, I go to their place, I can never find a place to park, and these are all two-twos in my understanding, is that correct?
Yes, sir, I believe that's correct. And we feel, I mean, we're certainly gonna meet the city code for parking. We've got a number of spaces, kind of as you pull into our entryway, where we think we may be able to do a little bit of tweaking on the site plan adjacent to Lockheed Martin to expand the parking, but we feel good about the number of parking we have. We're certainly gonna meet and/or exceed what the city code calls for for parking in multifamily.
Well, I'm...
You encouraged that.
I'm still in, on the cusp right now, but I'll let some other folks talk.
Okay. Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mark. But I would think, you know, after reviewing what, you know, has been presented to us, as well as what you've shared along with Mr. Barnby, and the differences that we've made to make this project be more of support, especially when we're looking for more dwelling opportunities in our city, and where it's landing, as I think a little bit of what we've seen some other places, and the traffic flow, of course, being commensurate to what is already there with how people traverse. I'm just glad to know that the combination's being made, and the city, our staff, of course, making sure those things are being taken care of as well. So I'm very supportive of what I've seen has been presented to us, especially with what we know we're looking for and ask for in an area that we know will not be so much controversial, especially when you don't have the close residential stuff all around it. So I think a very good job's been done on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments by commissioners? Other comments or questions by the public? Just please come up to the mic and state your name and address and ask away.
Good morning. My name is Sharon Smyers. I have a question on the lane, the turnout lane from the development, the safety there. I think it looks like it's merging with two lanes, one way, heading to east. So is there enough time for the residents to pull out and merge safely with the traffic?
Mr. Barnby.
For the record, again, Chuck Barnby, Community Development. Really, in terms of our discussions with DOT, there were really no issues raised at all related to the merge time for folks to be able to get over to make a left-hand turn at Underpass Road, which is a stop-controlled intersection. Really, the big issue was the driveway spacing relative to Lockheed Martin. Of course, everything is ultimately going to have to go through the DOT permitting process, but eliminating that secondary driveway there on the east side of Lockheed Martin is certainly going to be a safer situation, particularly with the eastbound right turn lane that is, that will be designed.
Commission music.
On that, Chuck, what is the, like, what's the reason that they would look and say, we're going to do a slow right-hand merge lane into that? That's just, they just do the math and say, you know, we want to, we want to do something like that?
You know, I think in terms of just looking at this, what DOT has really gotten away from probably over the past 20 years or so are the traditional merge areas and the taper lanes, because they tend to create more safety problems, people trying to look over their shoulder and actually get into traffic. So they really are trying to encourage folks to pull in as close to 90 degrees as possible. So the only issues that I would see coming up is, is, you know, are there things that need to happen with the speed limit? Are there things need to happen with Parker Freinage Road itself? But ultimately, in terms of the driveway configuration, that outbound movement is as close to what we've seen DOT approve as.
Yeah. And after you say that, my bank happens to be on Harden Boulevard there, and when I come out from that to turn north on Harden Boulevard, there is a little turnway there, and nobody ever seems to use it. So I patiently wait. But, so they've gotten away from that. Okay.
All right. Other questions? Any from the audience, because that's where we were. Now please come up and just state your name, please, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Maria Mahoney. I have a couple of questions regarding that development. Number one, the traffic study actually talks about the level of Service F, but it has been made in light of that particular project. Can we look at it cumulatively about all other potential projects in that area? You cannot look at it just individually. So that's one question. The other one has to do with the parking. We're looking at 1.8 parking spaces per unit. I don't know where you found 1.8. It doesn't seem enough, plus, of course, visitors. It seems to me that there should be more parking allocation. Thank you.
In terms of the traffic study, there was a growth factor that was built into the analysis, a 2% growth factor in addition to Oak Bridge. So we believe that that does represent a lot of what we would expect to see in the greater southwest Lakeland area. And it's consistent with the TPO methodologies and the city's methodologies for traffic studies as outlined in the Land Development Code. In terms of parking, the numbers that are on the screen here, the requirements are for 520 spaces for these number, for this number of units with two bedrooms. The site plan is showing 562, which is 42 over the required minimum, and, but does not exceed the 10% maximum that's also restricted in the Land Development Code. What we want to avoid is having too much impervious surface that creates flooding or other issues. You know, parking is one issue, but we also have heat-on effect and other impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods that we want to prevent with this, with this type of analysis. So in terms of the traffic study and the parking, it's all, everything's all within the bounds of the Land Development Code.
All right. And the spaces we require as the city is what? How many?
For, I think for one bedroom, it's one per, one space per one-bedroom unit and one and a half per two-plus.
Two. So one and a half. So it's an excess of one and a half.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker. Thank you, Mayor. Chuck had a question. The 2% growth factor, can you just explain that for folks listening, and as a reminder to us, so in numbers, like what does that equate to? And what's the time period you set on that?
So for the, what we typically do in terms of track analysis, we have what we call vested trips in terms of approved development that's within the impact area of the development. We add that in with the traffic study, with the project traffic and the existing traffic counts. In this instance, really, the only vested trips that we had were from Oak Bridge, which is sizable. I mean, for, kind of order of magnitude, what's remaining right now within Oak Bridge Development Regional Impact is an over 500,000 square foot retail center with multifamily and single family immediately to the west. And so it's not an insignificant amount of traffic. Because there are other trips that will be on the surrounding road system from, say, Riverstone or Town Park or other developments to the, to the west, we provide a general 2% growth factor to anticipate nonspecific growth that's not tied to a specific project. And so that's where the 2% growth factor plus Oak Bridge gives us a very good indication of what that traffic looks like. And that 2% annual, is an annual growth rate.
Okay.
So I believe on this one, we were looking at a 25 or 26 build-out. So that's, you know, 2% each year. And so there is a sizable amount of growth that's built in, in here, just to make sure we had a conservative analysis in compliance with our local standards.
And you said that number is consistent with what we do at TPO and that
That's exactly.
Industry standard in planning and
There are some areas where, within the project, and we'll be talking about one later on today, where there's a sizable amount of vested trips directly tied to approved development that is still coming out of the ground. And so those have specific line items in the traffic study that we can account for, for each of those trips. Here, it was really, it was really about Oak Bridge.
Thank you.
Any other questions at all from the audience? So we'll call vote. Commissioner Walker.
Hi.
Aye.
No.
Aye. So six to one. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. That takes us to item two.
The next ordinance for consideration this morning is proposed ordinance number 22-047, an ordinance relating to local government comprehensive planning, making findings, provided for small-scale amendment number LUS 21-007 to a certain portion of the future land use map of the Lakeland Comprehensive Plan Our Community 2030, changing the future land use designation on approximately 29.73 acres located south of Town Park Boulevard and west of Yates Road from residential low RL and Neighborhood Activity Center NAC to residential medium RM, provided for severability, provided in effective date.
Motion to approve in a second from Commissioner Walker. Discussion by commissioners. Let's do the presentation. Okay.
Well, good morning again. For the record, Chuck Barnby of the Community Academic Development Department. Today's actions actually have two components. One is related to land use and one is related to zoning and the amendment of a planning and development zoning ordinance. So the property site is located on the west side of Gates Road, just south of Town Park Estates Boulevard. And from a land use standpoint, the request is to change a portion of the Neighborhood Activity Center that was remaining from there at the corner of West Pipkin and Yates Road, from Neighborhood Activity Center to residential medium, and then to change the balance of the site, the balance of the almost 30-acre tract from residential low to residential medium. Looking to the right side, there's the property immediately to the north, previously had a Neighborhood Activity Center land use and was recently changed earlier this year to residential high, to a count for 252 units. It's called the Mosaic project. That project is currently in for site plan approval. The other thing to note here is that there is a substantial amount of construction activity that's underway right now, related to the widening of Pipkin Road in this area from two to four lanes. And with that, there's a widening of Yates Road to a modified, kind of a three or four-lane cross-section as you come south from Pipkin Road towards a taper that ends just north of Wagner Elementary. So there's a lot of work that's happening right now to provide additional capacity and improve the operations of this area. These are some pictures that show what it looks like here recently. Just kind of doing a tour, looking, looking south on Yates, looking north on Yates, back towards Pipkin Road. This is Town Park Boulevard. And what I want to do here is take a few minutes to describe the changes in the application from when it was first submitted to city staff to where we are today. The original proposal was for 356 multifamily dwelling units confined to three, four-story buildings, basically with the layout that you see on the screen. During the public hearing process, the public and the Planning and Zoning Board had significant concerns regarding the compatibility of that design related to the surrounding single-family uses, the neighborhoods to the west and to the east. The other issues that were lacking at that time were lack of a traffic study, lack of sightline diagrams to look at how the buildings would look from the Town Park neighborhood, as well as from the neighborhoods on the east side of Yates Road. Since that time, there's been a considerable amount of coordination between city staff and the development team. And the development representative will be able to get into some additional renderings and exhibits here in a few minutes. But we want to say that where we were then is very different from where we are today, with a development that is now, the proposed number of units is down to 252, so a decrease of over 100 units. The buildings are restricted to three-story height, broken up into multiple buildings to create more of a village-type feel and look that's more compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. We do have some additional sightline diagrams to provide a better indication of what the buildings would look like from the surrounding neighborhoods, both to the east and to the west. We also have some additional renderings that show from a scale standpoint of how these buildings would look relative to nearby buildings like GEICO, which is up on the north side of West Pipkin Road. So you can tell there that the average existing tree line height is 35 to 40 feet. The GEICO building is approximately 60 feet tall. And so once you start to kind of take a look at those parameters, you see how these buildings will fit in with those, with those features. So in terms of traffic, which is always a big issue on these types of developments, Way Engineering out of the Tampa area developed a full-blown traffic study in compliance with not only city requirements, but also the traffic study was reviewed by Polk County staff as well, since West Pipkin Road and Yates Road are operated by Polk County. The trip generation is approximately just under 1,200 daily trips, 99 during the AM and 99 during the PM peak. One of the things I want to note here is, is that for a residential low land use, which allows up to five units per acre, if we were looking at a 30-acre site and has single-family homes on it, we would have somewhere around 148 to 150 single-family units on that property. The trip generation with that type of development would be about 50% higher than what's proposed here. So single-family development generates more traffic per unit. And in this area, with this size of development, we could potentially be looking at more trip generation with a single-family product. So I just want everybody to understand that going forward. The traffic study did include development trips or vested trips from the nearby Hawthorne Ranch Development, for which the City Commission adopted a development agreement earlier this year. The remaining trips, which aren't many, but the remaining trips from the Riverstone Development to the west, as well as some minor growth for GEICO. The development team discussed GEICO's kind of, I guess, reciting or reemployment plans. And what they were expecting was about a 10% growth from where they are now after COVID, but they are certainly not expected to come back to full strength like they were before COVID. And so we wanted to make sure that that issue was addressed. And also, the traffic from the Mosaic multifamily development on the north side of Town Park Boulevard was also included in the traffic analysis as well. So again, we believe we've got a conservative analysis that really accounts for the specific development for which approvals have been granted in the past two or three years within the immediate area. Just like we did with Riverstone, just like we've done with Hawthorne and Mosaic, a supplemental AM peak analysis was also conducted because of the proximity of the development site to Wagner Elementary School to the south. So we wanted to make sure that that traffic was addressed as well. When we conduct traffic studies, we look at a significance area in which the project at hand consumes 5% of the directional capacity of a roadway. So, you know, for this traffic study, Pipkin Road was analyzed, Yates Road was analyzed. Yule was not formally analyzed as part of the study because it fell outside of the 5% impact area. So we wanted to make sure that we focused on where the project was having the most, the most significant impact, and then based our transportation conditions off of those roadway segments and intersections. The biggest issue that we saw from an operational standpoint was that the northbound approach to the Gates Road-Pipkin Road intersection would be expected to fail during AM and PM peaks, and that the congestion would cause the entire intersection to fail during the AM peak period, which you've got the overlap with school traffic and surrounding residential traffic. The city's comprehensive plan and our level of service policies are based on PM peak. So that's why when, for concurrency purposes, we look at PM or the four to six timeframe in the evening. In the morning, we'd look at AM peak in instances like this, from 7:00 to 9:00 AM, but it's more of an operational issue than a concurrency issue for those purposes. We also had the developer take a look at the existing configuration of the Mandela-West-Pipkin Road intersection, which right now is under stop control, north and southbound. If you're coming north out of Riverstone or coming south from Sun and Fun, that intersection right now is controlled with stop signs. The developer of Riverstone is in the process of designing the signalization of that intersection. We've got a, we've got a bond in hand here at the city to make sure that happens, but that's a development requirement for Riverstone. That intersection will be signalized. And so the failures are based on the existing conditions as opposed to the signalized conditions that are forthcoming. And of course, the ongoing improvements to West Pipkin Road were factored into the analysis as well. The biggest issue from a traffic standpoint, you know, and this is, this is one that we've been talking about internally and are going to continue to talk about internally, is cut-through traffic. When Town Park was laid out and the zoning approval for that neighborhood occurred first in 2003, it was always intended that we would have a connection back to the west. At that time, we were expecting to be connecting to Business Park or Employment Center-type development, and then more residential development moving back towards County Line Road. Over time, what we've seen is, of course, certainly Riverstone and Hawthorne Ranch or the, or the large residential developments that have, or are in the process of developing, you know, to the west. But the Business Park area, kind of in between, has been changed from, changed to a recreation land use to support the city's southwest, southwest park. So as we start to take a look at kind of how this area has evolved over the past 20 years, going from Business Park to recreation land use certainly takes away some vested trips for, you know, that are much higher than what you would find with a park facility. Likewise, at Town Park and, or Gates and Pipkin Road, going from Neighborhood Activity Center, which would allow around 100,000 square feet of retail space, to 252 multifamily units with Mosaic, also represents a decrease in traffic potential. So none of this happens in a vacuum. This all evolves over a 20-year period. But the cut-through traffic is something that, you know, we really do need to look at the options provided by the Neighborhood Association in terms of race crosswalks. Are there additional stop controls, stop sign intersection treatments that we can do involving Town Park Boulevard, White Egrith, White Ibis, that entire street system going back to Mandela Road? Because, you know, the streets there are straight, they're 24 feet wide, they definitely are wider than current Land Development Code and engineering standards. So that's something that we're going to address internally. But I want to make sure that we completely note that cut-through traffic is an issue that we're working on, and that's something that was raised by the neighborhood. What we also had done during the traffic analysis was assume that most of the project traffic would be coming in and out via Town Park Boulevard. And really, the logic for that was to put a stress test on the Town Park-Gates Road intersection to see if it was apparent that a traffic signal was needed now, or some other types of geometric improvements, turn lanes, things of that nature. That was not the case. What we did see, though, was is that we saw a borderline need for a westbound left turn lane coming into the, coming into the, this community, you know, if it's approved. The difference between the estimated left turns and our requirements for a, for a left turn lane was about two trips. So because that was a relatively small amount, what we decided to do was focus our efforts instead instead on Yates Road. With the Yates Road improvements that are coming forward, there's an opportunity to work in left and right turn lanes with that county project. And so, we'll go through a tour real quick of, this is what's coming, what's under construction now by Polk County. This is starting at the West Pipkin intersection, and so you've got a long left turn and a long right turn lane northbound approaching the traffic signal. As you head south, there are dual left turn lanes coming off of Pipkin and two southbound lanes on Yates Road as you head towards Town Park. So at Town Park, we in essence have a four-lane cross-section for Yates Road that is under construction now, and then the road begins to taper southbound so that it's one lane by the time you get to Wagner Elementary School. As you get across from Forest Brook Drive, you know, aligning with the, we believe will be the primary entrance because of the location of the amenity center, the mailbox kiosk, those types of facilities, the development team is working with the county on options to include a northbound left and a southbound right on Yates Road at this location. So, while the road is under construction, we've got a window of opportunity to get the turn lanes and all the other improvements in here while the roadway is under construction and haven't done once and not multiple times. So that work is underway right now. So in terms of going into the specific conditions of approval, again, the maximum intensity here is 252 multifamily dwelling units, MF12 suburban neighborhood context district design with a binding site plan. The landscaping, the buffering is as noted, you know, on the site plan, but what is key here is that there is a sizable wetland area between the multifamily units in the Town Park neighborhood, which will be maintained. There will also be an extensive buffer that we'll show you here in a minute that is going to be between the buildings and Yates Road. So we are buffering the development from the surrounding neighborhoods to maintain compatibility. Outdoor lighting is going to be per the Land Development Code. In terms of transportation currency, we've got our standard multimodal conditions. We're going to be requiring an navigation easement because of the site's proximity to the airport. The site will have to submit an annexation petition to annex into the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District and be subjected to the half mil ad valorem tax. Prior to site plan submittal, a signal warrant analysis is also going to be required at the Town Park-Gates intersection, again, to verify that a signal is not required at that location. I think one of the concerns that we have as staff, though, is that if a signal is installed at Town Park and Yates Road, that's going to encourage more cut-through. So that's something that, depending on what the results of the analysis show, we're going to have to take a look at the implications for the surrounding neighborhood. We're also going to require that, an operations plan for Yates and Pipkin Road intersection to address, to make the PM operations more efficient, and to address the level of service failures during the AM peak. And there are different ways that we've been talking with the county about to address that, but we need the developer and his traffic team, or their traffic team, to provide that information, that analysis, so that that operations plan can be worked into the signals that are under design right now. The site access, you know, we're going to be allowing a full access on Town Park Boulevard opposite the Mosaic community, so those driveways will be aligned. And we'll also be allowing a full access point on Yates Road with turn lanes and other permitting requirements by Polk County's permitting jurisdiction. The other thing that we have built into the analysis is a, or into the conditions, is a raised crosswalk on Town Park Boulevard between the development site and Soxboro Court at the existing crosswalk there on Town Park Boulevard. What we received from our Public Works Department following up on our discussion at Agenda Study on Friday is that a raised crosswalk costs approximately $50,000, not $10,000, and so I guess inflation has taken its toll. So it is not, it is not an insignificant cost that the developer will be incurring to put in the raised crosswalk. It also raises funding issues for our efforts as we try to look at a future funding plan for similar facilities further west in the Town Park community. So at this point, I will turn it over to Mr. Tim Campbell, who has a set of slides here that I will show related to the site design.
For purposes of your record, my name is Tim Campbell, law firm at Clark, Campbell, and Castor Workman &amp; Air, 500 South Florida Avenue. Part of our team today, Aleph at Yates, is the developer and now the owner. Josh is our project manager, and I don't know if he came in late or not. Steve Boynton and Nikki Pareda with the Lunds Group are our architectural advisors, and Drew Morrison is our project engineer with Chastain-Skillman, Inc. We're pleased to present this to you. This has been a positive work in progress, where we come to you and have revised our plans and our requests to reflect, as you heard Chuck share with you, the comments that were received from the staff, from neighbors, and in the initial Planning and Zoning Board meeting. The developer first came in, as you heard, with a plan for 356 multifamily units with four-story buildings. And after getting that feedback from the Community and Economic Development staff, and considering the input from neighbors, the developer then retained the Lunds Group, Chastain-Skillman, and my firm to conduct, on their behalf, a more critical review of an appropriate development plan that would be compatible in this area and appropriate to move forward to this commission. Keeping in mind, as you heard, it's currently a combination of Neighborhood Activity Center, which is a commercial land use designation. They're on the north portion of the property and residential low. As we got into discussions with the staff in more detail, they recommended that they could not support any more than 252 units, which matches the number of units of the Mosaic multifamily development. They are lying just north of our site, not yet developed. The Mosaic project is on 18.74 acres with a residential high land use designation, so their density is about 13 and 1/2 units per acre, whereas ours is spread out across a 30-acre parcel. We only require a residential medium for our density. We're about 8 and 1/2 units per acre. So it's a step-down in density as you move away from the Pipkin Road-Yates Road intersection, which is an appropriate planning technique and a compatibility approach to step-down density as you move away from that intersection. We've also limited our buildings to three stories, and again, provides for the transitioning of density as you move away. Chuck, it kind of blotted, it goes over my head as he goes through all the traffic analysis, but I wanted to point out some points that were important. This proposal has less traffic than what would be generated from the existing land use designations. You heard Chuck say that. And with the existing designations, that means with more traffic, the thing that seemed to concern the Town Park residents the most is the cut-through traffic and the use of Town Park Boulevard would have been even higher because there would have been more trips generated from that site. The other benefit we have is, as you'll hear as we go through this, and you've already heard and you see in the plan that's up, our amenity center and our primary entrance is there on Yates Road. So while we have access, you know, your staff and its appropriate planning to require interconnectivity between developments, and we have that, access to Town Park Boulevard, our primary ingress and egress will be from Yates Road, and you heard Chuck describe that. We're working with the city and the county to do some turn lanes to accommodate that primary interests. When our team got involved to kind of sharpen the pencils and have a more scrutinized view of an appropriate development plan, we did get a detailed traffic study, and that's why Chuck's able to address all those things with you in detail that we presented, and your staff has very carefully reviewed. You heard, as far as the traffic on Town Park Boulevard, that we're required, as a condition of this approval, to install a raised crosswalk, which will help address pedestrian movement and speeds on that roadway, which apparently are already a problem. You also heard him reference the current plans for Yates Road, and you saw those. They begin to taper after the Town Park Boulevard access. So they're tapering as they come to where our entrance would be, which is across the street from Forest Brook North. What we're talking to the county about is extending that taper farther south, so that the taper doesn't begin until after our entrance and that for Forest Brook Drive North, allowing better logistics and traffic movement at both our entrance and the existing Forest Brook entrance across the street. So, in a lot of ways, this plan will allow for improved traffic movement in that area in conjunction with the plans that are already in place and construction is underway by the county of improving West Pipkin and improving Yates Road. So not surprising, we went ahead and, just in case Commissioner Reed were to ask, as he is apt to do, looked specifically at, to share with you the unit count. So we are approximately 50% one bedrooms, 50% two and three bedrooms for the 252 units. The parking requirement for our development in the area of the city that we're in is 1.5 parking spaces per one bedroom, two parking spaces per two or more bedrooms, and so the required number of spaces under the city's Land Development Code is 397 for the mix of development that we're proposing, and we have 403, so we exceed that number. The ADA required number of parking spaces is nine, and we have 14, again, greater than the requirement. So we think we've addressed the parking. We think the traffic has been well addressed in conjunction with our traffic engineer and your staff. You see the plan that's up, and I'm thankful that the Lunds Group was involved in this because they can pictures paint a much better story than we can get up here and talk about. So Nikki Pareda, in a moment, is going to kind of walk you through their whole rendering plans and describe that in a little more detail, and you can see how good a job that they did of creating a kind of a community within this development. So we're very pleased to be presenting that. Keep in mind, we had a, after the meeting, as we were changing our plans, we conducted a video conference with the association so we could share those plans and discuss those. So we tried to be responsive from the beginning and ongoing with the neighbors. So we were pleased to present these to you. We think it's changed in a very positive way. We have a positive staff recommendation from your Community and Economic Development staff, and a unanimous recommendation for approval from your Planning and Zoning Board. And with that, I'm going to introduce Nikki to kind of go through these slides. We will stand available for any questions that you have, and I respectfully request an opportunity to respond to any public comment that you may receive.
Okay, questions from Commissioners. Commissioner Mann.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tim. I love the imagery. It's great. I was wondering if either you or Chuck could show us with this picture where the Mosaic entrance is. Didn't he say something that was going to be like a cross?
So, the Mosaic project is this currently vacant property at the intersection. This is Pipkin. This is Yates. So that's Mosaic. Their access to Town Park Boulevard, and this is exactly what municipal engineers and planning groups do, they line those up because those are much safer. So their entrance will be right across from ours on Town Park Boulevard.
And that, I think, is a strategic kind of point for us, who like to see the big picture, because just like you have worked with staff and with neighbors, I'm assuming Mosaic will do the same, and then with the $50,000 it costs to put the raised sidewalk, we have Mosaic also coming into play at that actual intersection on Town Park that could give us another opportunity to work for, you know, future mitigating that traffic on that road.
Right.
So that's not, obviously, your responsibility, but I think it's good for us to think about that, too, when Chuck mentioned going forward in the future to mitigate any kind of traffic or speed on that road, that there's also another, you know, development that we can work in the future, you know, with as well. So, thank you. I think that's great to see it on the picture.
Well, because your staff well represents you and neighbors and existing residents, it has become our responsibility because it's a condition of our approval, but it's a good idea, and it does mitigate. I'm glad Josh isn't here, because I don't know if he heard the 10,000 to 50, but it is, it is what it is. The other thing that's helpful is your staff does a very good job of coordinating. When there are two different developments going through the process, they're going to coordinate these access points and that raised median, and they're going to require us, which it's better for each of the developers and better for the community if we do coordinate and we have the staff as a facilitator for that purpose. So we will be going through that process in conjunction with the Mosaic development.
Thank you.
Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Campbell. I'm glad to hear and to know, as construction is being done, as we all know, with Pipkin and Yates, and heading south on Yates, beyond your particular, of the development that you are here to share, that we're going to have, I guess, road diet still, I guess, somewhat two-lane, and then eventually become one lane as it goes down toward the school. Now, you said, I think you all would make sure to get either further south of what your development is. Am I saying that right?
Kind of, except you used the word "road diet."
Well...
That's another story. Here, I'm...
The roadway, okay?
This is like that because you saw the pictures where they're clearing for the Yates Road improvements.
Yes.
That is going to continue, because they've added lanes at this intersection. It continues to accommodate this access to Town Park Boulevard. It continues. It begins, when you saw the plan, it begins to taper here back to the existing configuration. What we're dealing, what we're meeting with the county for is just extending this taper. Instead of happening, instead of it tapering before and as you pass by our entrance on Forest Brook Drive North, the tapering will not begin until after this intersection, allowing for better traffic movement for both Forest Brook Drive North and our development.
Yeah, I think that's helpful for the Forest Brook area there, to have, be able to accommodate, you know, coming in and out what they would need for the residential community right there. So I applaud, you know, our staff and, of course, working with you all to make sure that you accommodate, making sure we get that passed.
Right. And, Mr. Mayor, if you'll excuse me, the liberty of also publicly thanking Commissioner Walker for his excellent service to the city of Lakeland during his 13 years. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Yes, a bunch of music.
And, Tim, and I don't know if this is a question for you or Chuck, but he had mentioned the traffic count on the way that the property is approved already for 148 houses. The trip count of that is actually a higher number than it would be for a development of this size. Is that, I just want to make sure that I understood that correctly.
He did say that, but let me let him say that.
For the record, again, Chuck Barnby with the city of Lakeland. And that is correct. With a single-family home, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the Trip Generation Manual, which we use for all development types, you know, and it's based on nationwide data collection, a lot of it from Florida, is we, you're about 10 trips per lot per day or one trip per PM peak hour. And so, when you, I mean, it's just kind of easy math on that one, is 148 times 10, 14, you know, and then during the PM peak hour is 148. So that's where it's 50% more than a 252-unit multifamily development like we're talking about here. So even though the number of units, the trip generation is typically lower for an apartment. So, what we would do is, we would base density on kind of the gross acreage, so, you know, what we do to encourage wetland preservation and more clustering of development types is that, you know, we would give them credit for the 29.73-acre site, and so if they, you know, may end up being 40-foot wide, you know, single-family lots, but they could get up to 148 lots if we stayed at a residential low.
Yeah, and that's, you know, for me, that's important because, you know, when we're, there are always going to be individuals that come in front of us that are just, they don't want any development at all. But then what we're tasked with and what is great with this information is that what we're doing is a developable site, we're actually doing all we can to mitigate that, and not only have they verified that, but with the, you know, with the work that you and your team have done over at the Lunds Group to make that, you know, hopefully a reality. So, thank you.
One other thing that it allows us to do, as opposed to single-family homes, with the multifamily... with the multifamily, your buildings are more combined. So as you can see, and Nikki will do a better job with some more of her slides, is we're a quite the existing mature landscaped site. I've sat out on Town Park Boulevard, and you can barely see into the site. And you can see from this rendering that we're leaving along Yates Road, the existing trees as a buffer along Yates Road. There are significant buffering to the west of our buildings, and you'll see more pictures. The, the kind of the other area is a conservation easement area that was part of the stormwater and mitigation permit, swift mud permit with the entire Town Park Boulevard. That will remain, so none of that area will change. And it, it really does fit in there very nicely into, in this site. And we think it's going to, going to be very nice. So thank you.
All right. So should we take a look at those slides?
Good morning, Nikki Pareda, for the record, at the Lunds Group, 58 Lake Morton Drive. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak today and I have the pleasure of talking about the architectural intent. So we talked a little bit about the sites. I won't go into too much further detail, other than I do want to point out a few things. In the dark blue, you see the existing wetlands. Those are not, we're not touching those at all. They're going to stay and stay in existing. And, but in the light blue are the retention ponds that we plan to provide in order to provide some stormwater retention. And we're not utilizing at all any of the wetlands for that. So in addition to the deciduous trees that exist at about 35, 40-foot canopy, some of them a little bit more, we do have a nice buffer with the retention ponds in the wetlands in addition to that. And also just discussing a little bit more about the step-down in density. We originally had three larger buildings, but we were able to provide in the same footprint six smaller buildings. We've got three buildings that are 48 units and three buildings that are 32 units. So it works out nicely to kind of give that village effect. We can skip over this one. The next rendering I do want to point out is the entrance. This is a bird's eye view, so you can see how nice the clubhouse is nestled right there. This is right across from Forest Brook and creates that nice trajectory. Right when you walk in, you have the amenities. We've got the clubhouse situated at about 3,000 square feet with a 1,500-square-foot pool overlooking that nice deciduous backdrop you've got there. And then with the intent to provide signage on one or both sides just to create that nestled entry and then a row of palm trees just to, to create that community effect. We took a look at this a little bit, but we are, we stepped down from originally requesting four stories. So we've got three stories that we are providing and showing just a view of a gentleman who's six foot tall on the tallest balcony overlooking the canopies. That view would be about a 30-foot sightline. So those canopies would still be beyond the average view line of somebody standing at the highest floor. And here we show that separation between the existing wetlands. It's about a 400-foot distance. So you can see what that distance is from the back of that neighborhood. And also, there's, there's still quite a bit of distance. We've got that separation with the deciduous trees right along Yates to create that privacy buffer as well to those neighborhoods on the east. Here shows a conceptual rendering, just a bird's eye view of what that large expanse of distance is and that buffer for the back of the apartments. And here shows that same person who's standing on the highest floor. This is the third-floor balcony overlooking to Yates Road. And this is looking from, looking down to the primary entrance, looking at the clubhouse, standing at Forest Brook Drive and what that buffer would look like as well. We'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Man.
Thank you. Chuck, where's the crosswalk going to be?
So what I will do is get back into. Yeah, I think if we, there you go. So the, so the crosswalk would actually be back over to the left, to the west. There's a, there's an existing crosswalk before you get to Song Sparrow Court. That's where the raised crosswalk would be. So it's the first, it's the first crosswalk at the first intersection within the Town Park neighborhood.
And that'll be, that'll be a traffic common element as well?
It, 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 it will, but we need to look at other locations as well. And, and there are some others that have been proposed by representative of the HOA that we're looking at. But this is the first one that would be tied directly to the, and the only one tied directly to this development.
Thank you. Well, Tim, I want to commend you. I think you've done a great job here today. And I like the parking component, obviously. I put my own little formula to stuff. Every property is unique regardless of their side-by-side. And each project may be the same, but they're different. And of course, I want our citizens to be cognizant of the fact that the Pipkin Road's not going to be completed until almost two and a half years from now. In '24. We've got the expansion of the airport. Some funds always a challenge in the area as well as the massive development going on further to the west. So I hope they'll be cognizant of the fact that it's going to be a challenge for them for a couple of years when the residents are moving out in that area. But that's all I want to say.
In fact, the timing on both these, Pipkin and this project could be about the same.
Exactly, because we'll have a design and construction. And I'll say, this was a developer who was, you know, wise enough to listen to what was appropriate and learn about the area and even wiser to bring in the Lunds Group and Chastain Skillman and kind enough to allow me to drag along.
Right, right. Other comments by commissioners? Any comments or questions by the public? Yes, please take the mic, just state your name, or this one's fine.
Good morning. I appreciate that you all are listening to all this. And as, as Tim said, the traffic and all that going over my head, too. So I appreciate that you all are studying and listening to this. My concern with this project is, again, the parking. And they, I think I heard that this was the project that had 442 parking places, but we're going to drop it down to 400 because they would have bicycle parking. Is this the one that we were going to add bicycle parking? And I'm wondering, where in the world are people going to ride their bicycles on Yates Road to Pipkin Road to Yule Road? How are they going to shop? How are they going to? I, I just don't get it. As it is with the number of parking places, it's 1.6 per unit. Miraton has same kind of spread of the studio, one, two, and three bedroom, and they require two parking places per unit. When I went and visited Miraton, they are parking on the road, both sides down the road. There is no place to park on the road, on Yates Road. There is no place for overflow. This is, I do not understand why we allow these developers and these developments to have less than adequate parking. They mentioned the land development code. I looked it up. I could not figure it out. Are they considering that this is urban in the land development code where they require less parking? Or is it considered suburban, which it is? It is in a developing area which is mostly rural and consider, was short time ago, considered country. So I would invite you all to please delay until the parking is addressed. They can address the size, the height, the beautiful layout with the buffers, but I would ask you to please delay and have them add parking. There's room, and there's no reason that we should make it profitable for the developer by allowing them the most space with the least amount of parking. Thank you.
And your name for the record.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Linda Bagley-Wiggs, 4602 Highlands Place Drive Lakeland.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, this is a.
I do have my word comment. And a separate note. I noticed that they are notifying 500 feet. This should be changed. We should notify 500 people. There are no people from that neighborhood here. When you send it to a few, 96 people over at Lake Miriam got the notice. We need to let the public know and notify more people, not just feet wide. Thank you.
So rule call vote, Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously passes.
All right. So that was the complaint amendment related to that development. Next is the modification of the PD zoning ordinance for the same development. That is proposed ordinance number 22-048. An ordinance relating to zoning, making findings. Amendment ordinance 4471 is amended to provide for a modification to planned unit development zoning for Town Park Estates to allow three-story multifamily residential development with a maximum of 252 dwelling units on approximately 29.73 acres located south of Town Park Boulevard and west of Yates Road, provided conditions, find conformity with the conference of plan, provided for severability, provided an effective date.
Move for approval? Motion to approve in a second discussion. Do we don't, we don't need anything else on this because we have the presentation.
Not unless you feel like you need something else. But you do need to call for public comment.
Oh, of course. Discussion by commissioners. Any comments by the audience? So rule call vote, Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
Unanimously passes. That, there are no resolutions and no report from the Community Redevelopment Agency. Our city manager has a verbal he'd like to share.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few different verbals. First of all, I want to just congratulate again our K-9 unit that was with us earlier this morning. You know, when we have our onboarding with new employees at the beginning of each month, the K-9 unit is one that we, we point to when we're talking about a, a world-class community being our, our vision for the city of Lakeland. And, you know, you heard all of the awards that they won. And in those competitions, they are competing with agencies and, and Canines that come from other countries. So when we talk about world-class, that's a, that's a great one to point to with the K-9 unit. So I just want to congratulate them. I want to mention to the public that we have opened our City of Lakeland Citizen Survey. That survey will run from October 15th through November the 15th. You can participate with that survey on a website at www.colcsurvey, the letters C-O-L-C-survey.com. If you would like to take that survey in a paper copy, we do have hard copies that are available here at City Hall down in the lobby, also at our libraries and our recreational complexes. And so please participate in that survey. That survey allows us to receive feedback related to city services and amenities. So we would encourage you to do that. Finally, Mr. Mayor, I would like to go to the podium for my next.
All right. This may be a surprise.
So yes, as you all know, usually when I go to the podium, there's a, an exciting announcement coming. And certainly that is consistent with the presentation that I want to make today. Effective yesterday, I have promoted our interim general manager of Lakeland Electric to the general manager position with Lakeland Electric. So I would ask Mike. I'd like to make just a few comments about Mr. Beckham and his career and his wealth of experience as he is promoted into this position. Mike is an educated electrical engineer. He served about 17 years working for the Georgia Power Company. They are a subsidiary of the Southern Company that produces and sells power across the entire southeastern United States. And in his position with Georgia Power, he managed multiple power production units, including coal, combustion, hydro, and, and also some familiarity with nuclear. Then with the Myrent Company, which is an independent power producer, he managed production plants and served as an operations and maintenance manager for them. He assisted with compliance management for the Alabama Power Company. For five years, he worked as a power production plant manager for the Tennessee Valley Authority. That's our nation's largest public power company. He served eight years as a director and manager for First Energy, which is based out of Akron, Ohio. They are one of our nation's largest investor-owned electric utility. In that role, he managed multiple production facilities and all business aspects of four different power plant sites. Since 2015, Mike has been serving as an assistant general manager with our own Lakeland Electric utility. He has been responsible for all aspects of power plant operations and maintenance. And so I wanted to make those comments about Mike just to let the commission and, and staff and the public know how experienced he is. Over the last six months, serving in the interim role, he has performed magnificently. And that certainly includes our response to the hurricane that he led us through just a few weeks ago. So I want to congratulate Mike. He, he has some special guests here today that I also want to welcome, and I would ask him to introduce them. But I just want to congratulate Mike Beckham, our new general manager of Lakeland Electric.
Thank you very much. Please don't add all those years up and come up with a total. Yeah, I would like to express appreciation to everybody that has supported me over this interim period. And first and foremost, my family, two of whom I'm very happy could be here today, my wife Teresa and my daughter Nikki. And Teresa and Nikki have very busy careers of their own and were able to make their schedule such that they could be here today. And I really appreciate that. There's nothing more important than having the support of your family. So I also wanted to say, appreciate the support of the Lakeland Electric family very much. That executive team and all of those employees over there have done a great job. My success is their success. They, what, what they've done is really what I get credit for. So honestly, so they, they've done just a great job, as Sean mentioned, leading through that hurricane, rapid turnaround time. Just a fantastic job they did. Also like to thank the city department heads, management. All city employees have been very encouraging to me, as well as you commissioners, Mayor Mutz. The utility committee members have all just provided tons of encouragement and support over the past six months. So I appreciate all of that support. Very happy to be now permanent general manager. I'm going to leave straight here and go back to my email template and take interim off. Thank you very much.
Wonderful announcements, and we really appreciate that, city manager for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no report from the finance director or anything under city ordinances and resolutions from the city attorney. So that brings us to utility 8C1. We have a recommendation.
Good morning. Ramona Sariani for the city attorney's office. One utility item, it's in agreement with Turbine Diagnostic Services, Inc. This is for the upgrade to the control systems at McIntosh Plant Diesel Generators. There are two of those diesel generators, as well as the control system upgrade to Gas Turbine 1 or GT1. These upgrades are necessary. The last upgrade that took place was in 2008. So they're not only necessary to ensure the reliability of the diesel generators, particularly due to the increased usage of the GT1, which has been more frequent, frequently used because of the closure of Unit 3. The purchasing department identified Turbine Diagnostic Services as a sole-source vendor because they are the original equipment manufacturer of the control systems upon your approval. The planning for the upgrade will begin, and those control systems will be installed and integrated by Turbine Diagnostic Services in the scheduled outage in 2023. And the, the agreement also, this is inclusive of hardware, software upgrades as well as training for those plant operators. The total cost is $237,086, and that is included in Lakeland Electric's FY '23 budget, and we'd ask for your favorable approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion to approve in a second discussion by commissioners. Talked about this a lot on Friday. You got some detail. Any questions or discussion by the audience? All right, Commissioner Walker? Oops, Commissioner, Missy?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Unanimously passes with the absence of Commissioner Walker. All right, that brings us then to the audience portion of the meeting. So if there's any audience comments that unrelated to item X, which it are 10, which is the selection of the interim city commissioners, or any other topics of any audience nature, this would be a time to do that. Seeing none, that takes us to the mayor members of the city commission for selection of the interim city commissioner. First of all, I'm going to start out by saying how grateful we are to have eight such wonderful candidates. And I'm, I'm doing that on behalf of the commission because we all concur. And it's wonderful to be in a city where the depth of enthusiasm for people and the involvement that has pre-existed today already exists in your lives. And I know from the standpoint of the commission, our hope is that to have created this time slot where this is Commissioner Walker's last meeting, and then we go into the next agenda study, this person would be in that agenda study and then be involved in our next commission meeting, making those decisions. commission meeting, making those decisions. This is a fulfillment of a term and doesn't require a public election. This is just a selection by the commission as provided by the charter. We have made the format where there are, each of us have already selected a group of four names that we will then turn in to Kelly Coos, and we, which we have not done yet, and I think everybody's name should be filled out so we could pass those.
And before we do that, I think it'd be appropriate to call for public comment on that.
Okay, sure.
And then submit the names.
Very good. And I follow the lead of our city attorney on any matters like.
And just, just to fill that out a little bit more, Commissioner Walker's effective date of resignation is November seventh. The next.
Six.
Well, midnight November seventh, basically. The next regular city election, under the city charter, vacancy on the commission is filled at the next regular city election.
Midnight.
That is November of two thousand twenty-three. Until that time, the city commission by majority vote would fill that vacancy by appointment. So that's what we're doing here. The city commission has decided on the process to follow to do that, and that is first to have a first round of, of voting to just select a top four shortlist that's in no ranked order, just simply to organize, facilitate the discussion. And I would just add that, that, that process is, is, is not a binding process, it's simply a process that the city commission decided on to facilitate this, this, this process.
It isn't defined by the charter.
So once the top four shortlist is, is, is determined, Kelly Coos, our city clerk, will announce that round of voting, and then the city commission will then take that top four and rank those four in order, and then our finance director and our city clerk will both run a, run the numbers through a spreadsheet to determine what the order of that top four, of, of the four is. Again, regardless of what order they come back in, that's not binding upon you. The city charter just simply says that a vacancy will, will be filled by majority vote of the city commission. So I want to emphasize that the ranking that we're going through is, is not a binding process, it's simply to facilitate all of this.
Right.
So with that, I think it's appropriate to have public comment and then the, the submission of the shortlist.
All right. So are there any comments from the public on that process choice? All right, now can we pass these?
Sure.
Pass to your left. Just Kelly's that way. Thank you.
Can we take a break?
What, how long will this take?
Just a couple minutes.
No, yeah, you can take a break right now.
Might be better to take a, you know, a set break of, of five minutes or something like that, so everybody knows when to come back if we are going to.
We'll do that.
Be losing people.
Eleven seventeen, we'll be back. It's eleven twelve. Yeah, it was screaming on, on Friday.
What's that? Oh, it was, it was so loud. But Andrew, just in case you're listening, the volume in the men's restroom is too quiet.
So just a little.
It was, it was, it was almost too, too soft in there to hear what we were talking about.
You must turn it off because I just left.
Oh, okay. Because when I was in there, it was quite nice.
I actually get married when I was in there. It's just not, but it was just like.
Is it, okay. No, I'm on.
But I was just now, so.
Where's your coffee?
I drank it.
I got you water.
Thank you. I just wanted to give you that. Thank you. Thank you for a start for the candy.
I'm telling you.
Sorry, I swallowed for me.
I needed about eight pieces. I don't know why they can't figure out these outlets on the.
Could you read the top four names?
So we have a clear one, two, and three.
One, two, and three names, okay.
And again, these are not in ranked order. This is simply, you know.
Yes, I'll read them alphabetically. We have two tied for fourth.
Will you say again now?
We have a clear one, two, and three, and we have two who are tied for fourth.
Okay.
So I'm going to read them alphabetically.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I, um. Right. Uh, but the two that are tied for fourth, Mike, I want to make sure I get them highlighted, and for some reason I'm not getting them. So Faison, LeMond, Roundtree, Shira, and Simmons.
Read them again.
Faison.
Faison, LeMond, Roundtree, Shira, and Simmons. Those are your top five.
So you have a choice to make. You can either go with three, or you can just go, go with five. It's, it's really up to you as to how you want to proceed with the second round of voting, which would be ranked.
As they have, so let me hear from you. Would you, are the top, let me ask this question. Of the top three numbers, is there a gap between the four tie and the top three that's?
Um, one and two are higher than the others.
Okay.
But we listed alphabetically many of us in no ranked order. There's no ranking in this. So I don't, I don't think you can.
You don't know, yeah.
Yeah.
What would you like to do? What's your argument? You want to go with the top three or you want to?
I think we take, I think we take the top five.
Yeah.
Because we don't have a, there's no, there was no ranked in this round.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So we're going to rank, rank top five or?
Rank top five.
I'm like, rank top three.
Out of that five, those five names?
Yeah.
Okay, I see what you're saying. But all of those names would be included. That's what I wanted to make sure, that five she read.
Would be.
In our, in the, in this next round of voting, that whether we rank top three or.
You are ranked the top five.
We're going to take top three out of the five.
Sure, if that works, yeah.
Is that the druthers?
I don't think.
What are your thoughts?
I think that we just rank three or rank five, and we're going to be doing this probably again. So, you know, let's do it again, and then we'll narrow it down and, and see where we're at. I'd rather do three, but it's okay.
Okay. Do three of the five.
Yes, that would be five, agree.
So we rank our top three in no particular order?
No.
Or re-rank them in order?
You're going to be provided sheets as soon as you tell us how many you want on those sheets. We're going to have someone print up the new sheets, bring them to you, and then you will rank them one through four, or one through, well, one through five or one through three, right?
One through three.
Right, but they, this next round will be ranked, and then you can decide how you want to proceed, but this next round.
Let's go three and rank one through three, okay?
We're going to rank one, two.
One, two, three.
We're going to pick from the five to pick your top three. So we want to cheat the three names.
So if that's the case, we need to have an announcement of who, who the top three are, if that's the consensus. I'm not sure we have a consensus yet. I've heard.
No, we're going to.
We're going to pick that.
Our top three from these five.
Out of the five.
Out of five, okay.
So just get a sheet for three names.
So you don't want to know the top three that had the most votes?
We don't, we didn't do it.
We didn't rank them.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
It's still a number, it's still how many people submitted that name. So it's not ranked, but it is based on who submitted names.
The number of names, that's true.
So the next step then is, is the city clerk's office will bring sheets over with the top five, and they'll have a ranking beside each name of, of that top five that you will circle, one being your top pick and five being your, your, your last pick.
Right.
We'll get a ranking from there, and that will be announced.
Yes.
And, and.
That's a level of complication I don't know that we were asking for.
I thought we would have a, have a, have a list come out, and we'll name three, one, two, and three, and then some will not get any votes maybe. Is that, that's what I interpreted.
We have five names. We each pick three from that five list.
Yes.
On this next round.
Okay, so you don't want to, you don't want to rank them.
Don't rank five, just pick, rank one, two, and three.
But it, it already happened that way because it's by number of names we've submitted, right?
My recommendation is if you're going to have five names on the list, you rank them one through five.
Okay.
Because we're adding, we're, we're, this is done numerically. So if you have some people that are voting for none, it's just going to be easier if you, if you have three or you have five.
Just rank.
Rank them one, two, three, or one through five.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes. I'm going to rank them one through three or one through five?
One through five.
One through five.
Are we in agreement that you want five names or three names on the list?
Five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do the three names, or the five names.
Heather, you have the five names. She's over there typing away like crazy.
Thank her.
Thank you, Heather.
Real time democracy.
We can just bring that same list out again, can't we?
So I copied it, so hopefully it'll fall in the copy. Coming soon, Heather said, just so you know. She's over there working. I'm going to have to. And make sure this is size right. And I think that was the one. That, that was the one. As long as that one.
By the way, while we have this delay, whoever becomes the candidate following this meeting, it would be wonderful to go to the communications department on the first floor so they can get head and shoulder shots of you right away, because we need to get working on all the work of giving, getting everything compiled. And Kevin Cook is ready and willing to, to escort you to all, to accomplish all that.
Yeah.
Seen that raccoon lately at your house?
It has, and it wants.
It calls humpkins in the yard, you may say, from New Jersey. And as they.
You got a bunch of trigger triggers at your house?
No, but I'm told it was in the next week. We'll call you and.
Yeah, I'd like to see a photo of it.
Like Butter Bay.
The goat.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Tyler.
We have our blue assigned.
I love this.
I'll try to get it.
I had extra blue pen, just in case.
If it's not blue, does it look down?
I can't.
Debbie's mom used to tell me when I was chewing my gum too fast. I appreciate the hints.
Listen, I know, you just, I'm trying to think of when I ever had something, say, like, I need you to speak now.
Never.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know that I've ever had that complaint.
One is like number one, right? One is the bad. I think so, yes.
Homer, you may want to re-explain, but I had a couple of questions. Directions on how to rank?
First through fifth.
One through five, right?
Again, the, with the sheet you've received, there, you should have one through five numbers on there. One is your top pick, five is. One is your top pick, five is your fifth pick, so rank them accordingly.
You did this very nicely. Okay.
Passing down when you're ready.
Not yet.
Right, right.
Oh, God, I meant your... Oh, that was a big cluster. It was very nice. Every time, it's just better.
Okay, you're done with that? And that score, I bet you have that.
You bet.
Yes, and we've, we've done that.
Our class today was...
We're going to go to three next? What's the, what's the process? Oh, okay. It could be everybody photo for the same person, I guess.
That's classy, yeah.
Which one has the van, like, that would be a class B, like, I'm sorry, that's a class A. So what class is like the Mercedes, you'll see, like the, the Sprinters? Because see, that's what we did, I wasn't taking the dog. We were attacking all our dogs, and that was, that was...
Well, first of all, I would never take the three dogs.
Yeah.
Yeah, never take the dog.
My wife likes me and she loves the dogs, so...
Yeah. Back at it.
Oh, my.
So Stephanie, where can we get your book?
I have one in my...
While Kelly's doing this, could I do a shameful plug for the swan roundup tomorrow?
Yeah, let's do it, because here's the timeline.
So we have the swan roundup tomorrow where we gather our flock of swans very cautiously and lovingly gather them and put them in their pens so they can rest overnight for their, their veterinary checkups. So the swan roundup will start at daybreak tomorrow around 7:20, 7:30, whenever it's, it's light enough out. We'll gather all the swans, put them in pens, but if you'd like to come out, participate, take photos, that's a great opportunity. And those that may want to participate with a hands-on activity on Wednesday, in the morning about 8:00 a.m., we'll have our swan vet there, and we would love to have some, some citizen volunteers and commission volunteers for photo ops, holding the swans as we prepare for the veterinary checkup. So, thank you.
What time is Wednesday?
So the swan roundup will start tomorrow morning about 7:20, 7:30, whenever it's first light. The veterinary checkups will take place on Wednesday, the day after tomorrow, at 8:00 a.m. That's when they will start. It takes about an hour and a half, maybe two hours, to go through the process of the veterinary checkup. But we would love to have you as our guest. We'll have a towel for you, so you don't get too messy, because the first time I ever did it, I, I, swan let me know he wasn't too happy in a certain matter, if you understand what I'm saying, but hopefully we'll see you out there either tomorrow and/or Wednesday. Thank you.
Excellent.
Yes. Commissioner.
Did, I thought I read somewhere, may have heard it, mine may be of just where it came from, but I had heard that the queen wanted her swans back?
That is fabrication.
Oh, my goodness.
First of all...
Which one would he get?
It'd be hard. Swans last about 20 to 30 years in captivity. Our oldest swan is 18 years old, so those, the queen swans are long gone.
Bingo.
Yeah. But that's complete fabrication. Matter of fact, she sent her, her official, they have someone who presides over the swans, if recall, about 10 years ago, it may have been about 15 years ago, she sent over her, her royal, I forget his title, but he came and spoke over the swans and, and... Anointed them, so.
Anointed.
All right, so I think that they're ready, and I just want to reiterate again that this is, this ranking is a, is a feedback mechanism for you to facilitate your, your, your thought process. It's not binding on you, you, you're free to select anyone that's not ranked or anyone that didn't make the shortlist. This is simply to help you get the information you need to make the decision.
Thank you.
Okay, so starting with the first choice.
We're going to alphabetize or number one?
No, ranked choice.
Ranked choice, so starting with number one. Simmons. Number two, Roundtree. Number three, Faison. Four, Malon. And five, Shira.
All right.
So with that information now, you can either do another round of voting or you can simply proceed to your deliberations. Ultimately, we'll require a motion in a second that receives a majority vote of the city commission to select the next interim commissioner.
And, yes, Commissioner.
I'm just making, so, I mean, so that we're not ready yet to just make a motion and...
You, you can if you want. This is your process.
You could, so would you make a motion on it?
I would, I would make a motion that we move forward with our number one selection of Dr. Simmons as the interim commissioner.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? By commissioners. Commissioner Walker.
Making sure I get my words right. I know we just did ranking based on one, two, three, four, or five, and I would love to hear conversation about our top three. If we, because again, it's ranked one, two, three, but we still don't have to choose.
A method to do that would be you could say no to this vote, and you could make a recommendation that we take the top two names each, that each of us come up out of this list with two names and we do the same process again.
Well, let's just, let's just get a thought. I just thought I, we got to vote, so I just thought, that was a thought.
Commissioner Music.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and I, I'm, I'm certainly open for that because, I mean, as, as I look at this, you know, I, I think back to my own time running, and I think that, that my anxiety or heart is beating as hard now for us making this decision because of the eight people that we have on there, any one of them could sit up here and, and, and do us proud and do the city proud. So I don't think that any of us look out at anybody out there and say, this isn't right, you know, or this, this isn't the best way to do it, because I think it's just, it's just, it's all new for all of us. And, and my, my hope, and I'm sure this will be repeated, is that those that have expressed interest and didn't, will not get this vote that, that we see them next, next term run.
Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Mayor, and I was waiting to hear Commissioner Walker's comments because I was curious, as the one who, this is the seat you're leaving, just what your thoughts were, and I, I think that makes sense to hear more about the top three. We could go with Dr. Simmons. And Mayor, whether we do the route you suggested to do another round of voting, the top two, that could certainly work, but I do think, and that is the challenge, as Commissioner, Commissioner Music said, when you have multiple people who could do the job, trying to pick one is difficult, so maybe further discussion or further exploration of those top few.
Well, you could, we could have that discussion right where we are with this motion. You can talk about the, the top three. Yes?
I think it's pertinent we have discussion now because invariably, if there's a vote and it's four or three, then it's over.
Right, right.
Yeah, and then you can't revote on him, right? Because that would...
You know, there's, we're going to have to assume you're thinking, are we going to vote?
Parliament procedure, would it not be?
I don't know that.
So that's, that was going to, that was my question, ask Palmer, because if you vote, that's what I've wondered before when we vote on things, whenever, when something is put to a motion, it's not that I'm necessarily against or for the motion necessarily, but once it's voted upon, can the same vote be offered again?
Under parliamentary, parliamentary procedures, someone that voted with majority can make a motion to reconsider the vote.
The person who voted with the majority.
And you have to get a second, and it has to be approved by a majority vote of the commission to reconsider it.
Thank you, President.
So I'm wanting to get a little clarity on where you would like to be in this process.
We have a motion to second, so we're good.
And before you vote, public comment again.
Or the motion could be rescinded?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote then on the motion. If you vote no on this motion, it does not necessarily mean that you're voting him out and can't be have a reconsideration.
And again, I'd ask for public comment before taking the vote.
The other option is, we could pause here, talk about the top three candidates, and then see where we come out, out of that discussion, and then vote, which...
I would like to, I would like to have that kind of discussion now.
Okay. Why didn't you kick it off?
Well, certainly I appreciate, you know, again, all the candidates that come forth and, because it is, as we always say, even when you put yourself out there to public to serve, you want to make sure that you, you know, you're there and you put your best foot forward and all those kind of things. Believe me, I look across my dais here, I've, I've been there many times, and certainly want to make sure that you, you do, do your part to make the better results come to be what you want it to be. But in hindsight, you know, it's not going to be the case of everybody, so thank you all, all of any of you that did that and want to step forward. And I'm hoping, even after the decision's made here in the next few moments, that who really desire to serve and want to serve will put yourself out there and run for this seat, or buy, as we should say, for this seat, and that's going to be, we're talking about two, three months from now, you need to make sure you got your game plan together and start hitting the streets and knocking on the doors as many of us, of us, of us has done. But for the top three, I, I think is, I, I'm, I'm not challenged, but I want to make sure, because I think all three would do a good job, as I heard my dear friend, Commissioner Music, just indicated, all eight, but the three we have, I think, would do well for the time period that's left, and it's only about 12 months, if you, if you consider it. But I, I have to say, I think we'd be concerned about what those next, these next months would take, the time we need for those next months to be. And I say that because we start dealing things with budgetary situations come spring of the year, and I think we need to make sure whomever is selected understands those particular situations. That's, we always have a challenge almost, and many of us own our own businesses and run our businesses for years, and I think it's important out of these top three that we look at who can really sit there and navigate and be able to take, take part of what that budgetary process is about. It's, it's can be strenuous, it takes time, and you need to know about certain things regarding finance, finance situations. We run a, as, as we always heard, we've always said, well over half a billion dollar operation here in the city of Lakeland. The county's budget's only one point one billion, and ours is 600 million, so that's well over half a billion dollars. And I think it takes, you know, someone who understands finance and finance practices and those kind of things and bring it to the table. Also, not only that, you got to be real rounded. You got to be real rounded, what I mean by that, even though I sit here and served in a northwest district seat, you know, you got to be concerned about the city as a whole because your, your vote comes from the popular vote, not just a district. And I, I try to have said this, and I will continue to say it, and I, as I'm leaving here in the next few days or so, we understand that the northwest district is a myriad of different ethnicities. It just happens to have the core black community encased in it, but there's other communities, other ethnicities there as well. My neighbor next door is not black, he's Hispanic. And I have a neighbor two down the street who's white. And you see a lot of that in the northwest district and even in the core black community now. So we have to be concerned about those kind of things as well as issues that affect everybody, every one, every one of us. So I just want to make sure that I throw it out to my colleagues as we think about the things that we need to be concerned about when you say choose someone and make sure they represent a district, but they got to represent Lakeland as well, and I think it's important that we make sure that person's well-rounded, has the talents, the gifts, and qualities that I think we all have, and when it comes to certain principles and, and situations like that. Thank you.
Commissioner Music.
Yeah, I'd be curious, of the seven, how many Dr. Simmons had as, as the number one pick?
He had all seven of you.
He was the number one.
As the number one pick?
Four.
Four. So four of us had him as our first selection?
Misunderstood.
Okay, that's okay, thank you. I just was looking for a win expectation.
The next closest was Roundtree, and they had two, that person had two number ones.
Yes.
So, to kind of echo what Commissioner Walker said about putting your name in the hat for this, we really appreciate it. Lakeland is so fortunate to have people who love this city, who are willing to put their name out in the public view and be reviewed. As a, as a sitting commissioner who sought an appointment prior to running and did not get it, Commissioner Selvage was appointed into the, into the interim before I ran for special election in 2018, then became elected in January of 2019 to fulfill a term. I really highly don't be discouraged. We have eight wonderful candidates. I would, I mean, I was a little discouraged and thought, well, I'm not going to do it, but I really, I don't want you to be discouraged because things do work out, and we have eight great candidates in this process. So just, I just sort of want to put that from personal experience of, you know, throwing your name out there and sticking your neck out to be appointed, if that doesn't work out, that's okay, you should totally run, and I'm a success story for then running a campaign and then, and getting elected, even though I did not get the appointment. So I just sort of want to make that sort of couch the whole discussion in that, that that's, to echo what other people have said in our workshops and also from the dais today, that we really hope that you will put your name on a ballot in the future, because even if you're appointed, you're going to have to put your name on the ballot to get re-elected. So also know that in the back of your mind as well. But with the top three candidates, I really agree with Commissioner Walker in that budgets are a really big deal and a huge part of our job, and also being well-rounded and knowing and understanding the community at large. I serve as the southwest district elected person, but I serve all of the city of Lakeland just as everyone else does up here, so we need to be pliable and listening to all voices all the time at what is best for the city of Lakeland. And I have to say that any of the eight, I would have been content with, you know, appointing in this position, and I do, our top three, you know, were on my shortlist, so this is a great discussion to have, and I would be happy with any of the three of them. I don't know if that's really helping anyone, but I wanted to say publicly about the moving forward. If not appointed, I would highly recommend running for the position.
Okay. If no one else is talking, then I'll go. I, I was, I'm excited to see Dr. Simmons be at the top of the list, and I'll tell you, from the standpoint of, and I have some good relationships beyond that in this room, his accounting background, his heart for the city, his working with all different sectors over time, his intentionality is just pretty awesome. And for, when I take a look at this list, I think it is a due reward for somebody who has served so long and hard to be recognized and be in that appointment, so I'm a strong advocate of that. Okay, any other discussion? Do we do public discussions? Any public discussion comments we can do at this point? And then you just come to the mic, state your name, and...
My name is Sharon Smyers, and thank you for your commitment and for the seriousness of this decision. I did want to confirm with the attorney that all ballots will be made public, all voting?
That's correct.
Through the different layers of voting?
They're all public records.
Okay.
Everything here is public record.
Okay, thank you.
Public record, yes.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Here, just, just... Here, just, just come to the mic. Whichever one works for you.
Good morning. Presentation to do, but Commissioner Walker was out of the room at the time. And with him being from my neighborhood, I would like for Mayor Mutt to help me present Commissioner Walker with the key to the city, since he is not going to be at my meeting tonight. I would like to go ahead and do that right now, if that would be okay.
Can, can we do that after this vote?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. We will. Thank you. You're not coming to that meeting tonight. It's supposed to be a nice surprise.
I just found out.
All right. Any other comments? Any other comments from the public? This is a roll call.
Yes, it should be roll call.
Commissioner McCall.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Unanimously selected. That's a pretty great affirmation, Dr. Simmons. Thank you. All right, we're going to put you back to work. Thank you all for your graciousness in this process and availability. And to Commissioner Rikarli's word, don't be dissuaded, okay? Keep up the great work you're doing because that's why you're in the room in the first place. Thanks very much. This opens up any other commission comments that you might have or things you'd like to share. And I think that'll be Commissioner Walker kicking us off.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, approach. It won't take long, approach.
Okay.
Make us cry. I have paperwork for him, so don't let him get too far.
He knows the drill.
Well, let me say this. Mayor Mutt and city commissioners, my fellow colleagues, as of my last day in office, which is November 6th, in less than six days, I would have marked 13 years in the office as city commissioner Northwest District. And what an honor to have served the city of Lakeland, where I was born and raised. And by six or nine years now, I have witnessed much change here in the city and have been a part of the numerous decision-making. As I reflect on my years of service, there are several situations that come to mind at the time, I think, I mean, at the time I took off, excuse me, and until now, which, which the became subject matter to support and, of course, deal with and resolve. Let me share a few. Number one, bridging the gap where the African-American community felt there was no connection to City Hall. Number two, youth gain violence and the establishment of a gain task force, which has now become our community engagement task force under LPD. Number three, acquisition and demolish of Lincoln Court apartments infested with prostitution and drugs, and now Lincoln Square, a thriving homeowners' community. Number four, continued support of our downtown core, the living room of our city becoming an economical and vibrant hub. Number five, relocation of the Confederate statue to veterans' park with other war and symbolic memorials. Number six, the digital divide, internet connection for our impoverished neighborhoods. Number seven, D E I, diversity, equity, and inclusion, whether it be by ethnicity, age, gender, or physical disabilities. No community, and I stress that, no community or city will remain healthy unless all are represented at every level of government, providing economic, social, and spiritual support. Number eight, the Lakeland History and Culture Center, a gallery sharing stories and exhibits of Lakeland's rich history and those who have made that possible. Number nine, Downtown West, our expansion of commercial, residential, and entertainment sector. And lastly, number 10, continual growth of our city, which affects critical areas of city operations, for example, police, fire, electric and water, transportation, to name a few, and having to be fiscally, having to be fiscally responsible. Let me thank staff for all the support given in my years of service. You have been there for me, providing resources and answers where needed. I have served with three mayors, three city managers, two city attorneys, four chiefs of police, and three fire chiefs. Now, if I have helped in some way along this journey, I thank God for how he has orchestrated my path. I leave this for my replacement. Lead by principle versus popularity. Lead with consistency, being concise versus being sporadic. And lead to serve versus to be served. As I close, I say farewell, but not goodbye, as I am sure our paths will cross soon. I thank God for the time, thank God for my family, my wife, especially those who've allowed me the time to be away from home, to deal and to endure many situations that we have been confronted with. I thank God again for the opportunity to serve, and I say again, farewell.
All right, Veronica, would you like to do that now?
Yes.
All right.
You can come back on back out.
Good morning. On behalf of the Valencia Pinehurst Neighborhood Association, I would like to present this key to the city to my commissioner still, Commissioner Philip Walker. We love you. We thank you for everything that you have done for us and the city. I just hate you not going to be able to make it tonight. We had plans for you, but since not, I think it's robbery if I didn't give it to you now.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Three, two, one. Two, one. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I do appreciate Ms. Veronica Roundtree and the Valencia Pinehurst Neighborhood Association. But as I shared with her, she may mentioned to me about being back in person to have their first meeting since post-COVID, of course. And I was sharing with her the possibility about, about not being able to attend. And that's because, again, I'm still celebrating birthday. And I have, I have a dear friend whose birthday is today, and he and his wife are over in the Orlando resort area. And because our birthday has been very close, had asked my wife to come and join them for their, his celebration. I said, well, why not? Hey, I'm still partying. So that's the reason why I explained it to her, but certainly appreciate the, you know, when you think about anyone that want to do anything for you or to support you in any way, you have to say thank you. And I thank God I may have lived a life before all of you. It would be pleasing to him first and then to man. Thank you.
Commissioner Music, anything to share?
Yeah, I, as the, well, I guess I can't say the most newly elected at this point, but he's done. You know, I find it very thankful to be able to sit by you, you know, and to learn. And not only do we share a common, a common faith, but a love for the city. And to have, to have the word bantered around a lot, public servant, you know, I think we, I think we use that term very flippantly sometimes, or very easily, not flippantly, but very easily. But, but, you know, Philip has just shown that to be a way of life. You know, there are people who just, they get up and they serve, and that's what they do. And, and I hope that, you know, I hope that I continue to make you proud as a commissioner doing, doing the same thing. You know, he met my, met my mother once and always asked how Ms. Sanders doing. Met my wife once, asked how Ms. Nikki's doing, you know? And it's just, it's that kind of love for people that I just, mission.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor? So I didn't look?
I know. So Commissioner Walker has been my friend for a really long time. So I'm trying not crying. I'm not a big public crier. I cry in private a lot. But Commissioner Walker, for those of you don't know, my late husband, Randy Roberts, was a huge Philip Walker fan, to the point where politically, he joined on to his first camp, first campaign really early. And he's like, Sarah, you have to, you have to meet Philip. Like, he's just this wonderful person. Talk about public servants. He's wonderful. He loves Jesus. He's a good man, and I really want you to meet him. And I think we met at Mayfair the first time, if I remember right. So subsequently, since we've met, one of the things that Commissioner Walker and I share is we were both widowed with young children. And so he has been, I usually like this, he has not only been a statesman and really served Lakeland and the state of Florida so well over these last several years through this role as a commissioner, but he has been a guiding light to me personally of how to have fortitude and faith and serve others, even when things are hard. And I just could not commend him anymore for, A, for being a loving friend to me, but such an example to me of how to, how to take a really hard situation and make it better, and always have that heart for other people because you can empathize, and you are a great empathizer. And I think that's what makes great public servants. And on another note, one of the other reasons why I get a little emotional is that he is a devout Ridge League of Cities guy, and Florida League of Cities guy. My late dad, for those of you who don't know, was mayor of Davenport for 16 years, and served as the president of the Ridge League of Cities and did some stuff with Florida League of Cities. But my father was always, but he didn't see, live to see me sit in the seat. But he was always so complimentary of Commissioner Walker. When other Lakeland people didn't show up to Ridge League, Commissioner Walker was always there. So I'm really honored to take his seat in serving the Ridge League of Cities in honor of his walk, Commissioner Walker's, as well as my dad's. And I just, there aren't enough words. But I just want you to know that not only do I, have I loved serving with you and looking at you as an example, I just more importantly love that you're my friend. And I really appreciate you.
All of that, and I'll add to it, your persistence to move on when things may not always go your way. You don't spend time whining. You don't spend time wishing differently. You spend time figuring out what we do next. And I think that's been a wonderful model to us all.
So I wanted to just kind of comment on two things. One of them that you said, and, you know, I don't go back pre-Walker on this commission, but I believe you when you said that there were some folks in your neighborhood who felt maybe not as heard at the commission level or at City Hall. And so that word bridge was, you know, I don't know if you remember, but one of the strategic planning meetings, I brought my bridge book. It's like an architectural book about bridges. And to me, bridge builders are so necessary, and they're, they're rare. I feel like today, we have a lot of big gulfs and divides, that it would be great if we had more Commissioner Walker bridges to go across those divides. And I always say, you know, I love the local government because it's nonpartisan, it's the messy middle. I love the messy middle. It's like a mom of six kids, you know, nobody agrees about everything. They all think they're right, but we got to get in the messy middle, and we got to talk about it and work it out to get to a solution. So that's kind of how I feel. But the word bridge to me is such a great metaphor, you know, for, for who you've been and who you are. And I'll add peacemaker to that, because I think it's really hard to be a bridge because one thing about bridges is they get walked on because they don't join a side. And everybody wants you to join a side and be on my side and stand solidly on my side. But then if we each stay on our side, then no bridges are built. So thank you for being walked on at times. I know the Confederate monument was our first, as a new commissioner, I thought, oh my God, this is our first thing we're going to talk about? I mean, that was so spicy and kept me up at night. And I remember, which, so I'm, I'm going to pivot from bridge to my next metaphor, and that is, you know, it was in the national news, it was politicized about moving monuments and erasing history. You know, I just kept hearing that word, you know, don't erase history. But what I found is history had already been erased. I mean, who all knew about Morehead unless you went and read the little sign by our P. Funding Center? And who knew about the Buffalo Soldiers? And who knew about some of the folks that you knew intimately because you lived in that neighborhood and had a long enough history to be able to, to remember for us? And so that's the other word that comes to my mind after bridge is memory keepers. And I'm at a stage of life that, even at 52, my youngest child in high school, but a lot of our friends are getting married and having children. And, you know, when the kids are getting married, they just want all their friends to come to the wedding. They don't really care about the old folks, you know? Like, we're like, wait a second, like, no, who are, you know, the parents want their friends to be able to be a part of this union because they remember that child when they were a baby and crawling and, and their, you know, kindergarten graduation. And the, and the young people getting married are like, well, who cares about those old people?
The people paying for the wedding.
And so I was at a shower recently with a friend whose daughter just got married this weekend. And, you know, we're the memory keepers. And the memory keepers need to be at every table and to be at every dais. And if there's not, it's great to have young blood and young life and enthusiasm and energy, but there would be a big gap without having memory keepers from every neighborhood. And you've been our memory keeper for the African-American community. And you've been our memory keeper for the African-American community, for the Northwest community, for your family, for your own personal experiences, living in the Jim Crow South and some of those things. And so I'm gonna miss that that gap. And I'm hopeful that whoever fills your seat or fills another seat on this will keep those memories for us. Because we have them now at the History and Cultural Center. I'm glad that we have another place that we can go visit. But I just want to thank you both for being a beautiful bridge and a memory keeper for Lakeland.
Thank you.
My turn. Okay. Philip, there's not much really I can add to what has been said, obviously. Of course, again, it's the words of wisdom that you always presented there. Again, it was a learning process. You were the ranking, well, Justin was here, Earlus, I kind of got some insight from him. And I've always leaned my ear towards you a lot of times to get a direction on what topics may be going to give me a lead. And so it gave me a little bit of insight on which way I could go, one way or the other, and facilitate the right decision for all the community. And there again, of course, my wife and your wife have just hit it off. And hopefully, you know, she said, "Let's do something with Philip." I said, "Well, we can't do stuff with, we can't do stuff now." Hopefully in the future, we will have an opportunity to
We will.
Have some fellowship together.
Your birthday comes at the same.
Yeah, anyway. But I really can't add any more. It's been a pleasure working with you. And I know your career's not over yet, so it's gonna be, I'm looking forward to whatever you do next.
Thank you.
So you become the ranking?
I'll be the oldest guy.
So I, so much has been said. When you go last, you feel like everybody has taken a piece of what I would echo. Several things, Commissioner Walker. I appreciate your sense of humor and how you maintain that even in challenging moments and tough issues. And we see that, that side of you, you know, we go back to the office, just that sense of humor. And I think that's important in the work that we do. I will miss hearing you say, "We've been here before, y'all." And I feel like every, you get into an issue and you say something like that. And for me, I always kind of sit up and pay attention because you have the history, the context, and a lot of the things, we just, we haven't been through it. But that's always been encouraging and helpful to hear the history, the things that, where we've been before that is similar to where we are today. I always appreciate that. I think the word that Commissioner McCarthy used and was in the proclamation is statesman. You are a true statesman. And we need more of that in politics today. And so I'm, whether you decide to have, I have served and I'm going to enjoy retirement phase with kids and grandkids or to some other opportunity in the political world. You know, I know you will be successful and we'll be here cheering you on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Want to continue this process?
Sure.
I really don't know how you haven't aged since 2010. I don't think you look a day older.
Oh, do I have, man?
I look 25 years older, so I guess it's a clear conscience or something. But we've been through a lot. And I know I can speak on behalf of myself and our whole office that will sincerely miss you and wish you the best.
Thank you.
So I first came to know Commissioner Walker at Ridge League Dinner meetings many years ago, before I came to Lakeland. And always found him to be approachable and friendly, but most important, and most importantly, encouraging. And we've shared some long rides to some cities during those Ridge League dinners along the way. And Commissioner Walker shared with me early on when I came to Lakeland as an assistant city manager, that he wasn't sure about me in the beginning. But over time, he has shared with me that I earned his confidence. And that means more to me than he'll ever know. And so whether it's as a role model, a father, a representative of this community, a commissioner, Philip Walker's a great man. And that's a great man and a great role model that I will miss deeply, though it will only be at this dais. But I know I will still see him and share things with him. And I'm gonna be looking forward to those weekend nighttime phone calls that I frequently get. And I don't want those to end. So congratulations on a stellar career in service to the city of Lakeland, Commissioner Walker. You are loved by this staff. There is no question. Going back to you being encouraging, this staff has felt that long before my time. And you leave with that reputation from those of us who work here at the city. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. There you go.
Mike needs a Kleenex.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So I will, I, I think one of the things I'm gonna miss the most has been your friendship. And you and I have fun sitting next to each other here. And I'll see you during the commission meetings and you're thinking of all these things that you want to say at the end. I may or may not lean over to you and say, "You know, I'm hungry." You really don't need to say all of that. Somebody else will say it. You don't have to do it all, Philip. Come on. I'm hungry. You, your such humor is, is, is something I'm always gonna remember. But you always cared, no matter who it was. My coworkers down in my office love when you pop by and want to ask a question. I got a question. And you always treat everyone with such respect, always, no matter who it is. And, and I'm never gonna forget that. I've gotten a chance to witness a lot of different personalities and a lot of different folks that truly care about the community. You're at the top. And I don't say that casually and no disrespect to anybody prior. You are, you are that person that has always lived it and cared it, no matter who it was. And that comes through in the questions you ask me. A lot of times, good, tough questions. And I'm never gonna forget that. This community will never, ever know all of what you've done for it. And to me, that's your true testament. So thank you. You've been a great friend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly.
Commissioner, I would loan you Ricola's. The moon went down. It would never matter. You are a kind person and I appreciate that. I appreciate the kindness that you showed to my friend Debbie Casey. She's had a rough year and you've been very supportive. And I've talked to some folks at the league on staff and they love President Walker for the Florida League of Cities. And I imagine you have a lot of personalities when someone moves up to that position. And they probably don't love all of them, but they love Philip. So
That's a bright.
Appreciate your servant heart and your friendship more than anything.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I think that wraps it up. Go to the floor and do this all day and cry every day. Okay, are there any other matters that you want to bring before the commission, before we adjourn?
What do we swear in the new November 7th?
Yes, that can occur as early as November 7th.
November 7th.
At the commission meeting.
Correct.
And we have a commission meeting that day.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I may. Congratulations, my dear brother. We go back a few years and we've had some hard knocks and deep discussions about things. And I'm sure if I could be of help to you, no, I would not be in your way at all. I respect the fact that you would be, at that time, the elected one to serve the Northwest District in Lakeland, not Philip Walker. And I want to say that publicly. You would be the one to serve the Northwest District. And I would be one of your residents. And I'm sure we would have conversations as time go on. So again, congratulations.
Sam, would you like to say anything? Yeah, please come on up to the mic, because we'd love to have you do that. Thank you so much. And congratulations, Dr. Simmons.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Lord for his support. And certainly, I'm gonna thank all of you for your confidence in appointing me to this position. And I was thinking, I'm certainly glad that some of your memories are short. And Mayor Muttz and Commissioner Walker and I think Commissioner Madden probably know what I mean. I've come before this, this commission several times over the past 20 years. And I argued passionately for the quality of life for the residents in the Northwest. And I may have stepped on some toes. And that's why I'm saying I'm glad that your memories are short.
And our appreciation for your passion is high.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So I just want to say that I look forward to working with all of you and serving the city of Lakeland. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll have a different meeting. Anything else? Other comments? If there are none, we adjourn.